Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance Budget Workshop, tonight, Tuesday, March 15, 2022. I ask that we please ask Dan for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic.
To the republic.
To the republic.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Justice.
And justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. Our next section is our public comment section, and I ask that people in attendance who want to address the boards, please give their name and address, and comments are to be limited to three minutes or less. If you are desiring to speak, if you type comment and your name in the chat box, you will be recognized.
Okay, the first public comment is from Diane Del Rosso. Diane, go ahead.
So I'd like to call to order the Board of Finance. Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt you, Danny.
No problem. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Andy?
We do have, we do have a public comment.
Oh, okay.
Tanya Mauer?
Yep, Tanya Mauer, Hope Valley Road. And I just wanted to call out and say I am super happy that hopefully we'll walk away with a thumbs up for the two pickleball courts at Burn Hill Park. Go team. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Any others?
I think that's it for now. There's another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. As you can see, the agenda is quite full tonight. So first, going for a presentation would be the Parks and Recreation Department, and with that would be Ken Jordan and Craig Bryant, the Parks and Rec Director. Now, Ken has promised me that he's going to keep this short, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to those two gentlemen.
Good evening. I just wanted a quick two minutes before Ken goes and does his presentation. The biggest thing I wanted to talk about, because it is a little different, is in the Fund, Fund One, the 3102, we are looking at increasing part-time payroll. We're hoping that we can get a part-time administrative assistant funded through 3102. The main reason we're looking is that's something we've, that we have funded in the past through Fund Four, but with some loss of revenue during the last few years because of COVID, we thought that this might be a chance where we could ask for it to be funded in 3102. And the reason we need the extra help is we are looking at adding more programs for more revenue to enhance the community as well. And just having a person there for four hours a day will, a lot, you know, one to two extra hours for myself and to Erica per day, just to work on other programming. So we're hoping that you would look at that favorably. And then, you know, with Fund Four, we are projected to be a little less than we were for this year's projections, but we think that with the programs that we are offering and what we're looking at doing, this goal is definitely attainable, and that extra help, that administrative assistant would help us achieve that goal. So I just ask that you take a look at that favorably.
Okay, you're going to turn it over to Ken?
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. I was just going to call up the presentation. Can you see it all right? Can everyone see the presentation?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Ken, can you, can you do it as a show, so it'll be larger on the screen? There you go. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So, good evening. As many know, my name is Ken Jordan. I'm the Chair of the Parking Rec Commission. I'd like to recognize the people that are on the meeting today to support pickleball. We have Ron and Sharon, Cheryl, Tanya, Chris and Lauren, and we've already heard from a few of them how excited they are about the potential for pickleball. This presentation this evening will focus on the much-needed improvements to Veterans Memorial Park. How bad is Veterans Park? I mean, the skate park is in poor condition. It's unsafe to use. It's an ice rink. It's been vandalized twice in the last few years, and it's currently closed. It started out as a Ram project, a student project, 25 years ago, and in its day, it was really an excellent skate park. But 25 years later, you can see from the pictures below, there's boards missing, there's gaps in the area. The Ram Skateboard Club actually came to a Parking Rec Commission meeting last fall and expressed some of the safety concerns even before the vandalism. So I think we all agree that the skate park needs attention. The playscapes at Vet Park are also very old and outdated. There's two playscapes there. There's one for two- to five-year-olds and one for five-to-12-year-olds. These were also installed over 20 years ago. You can see from the picture on the left, there's some areas that are starting to rust, and the picture in the center top, it's all faded and starting to crack. So those playscapes need replacing. You can see from the picture on the right, the basketball court, maybe you can't really see that clearly, but it's worn right down to the asphalt. You don't have a coating on there for most of the basketball court. So we're looking for that to be resurfaced. And the picture in the lower center is the softball field, and I think you've already heard some of the upgrades needed for the softball field, such as outfield fencing. So, as an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager, the Parking Rec Commission has voted to make the following recommended solution: upgrade the skate park with concrete and steel, add two pickleball courts, replace both playscapes, resurface the basketball court, and fund the softball field upgrades. These recommended changes will serve the children and adults of all ages to utilize this park and benefit from the facilities. So I'll go into each one, there's a little more detail, and as Andy said, I'm going to keep it moving along. So, upgrade the skate park. It would be new construction, made with concrete and steel, consistent with modern skate park designs and much less prone to vandalism. It would be on a smaller scale than the current skate park to control the cost. You can see in the two sketches below, this is the actual contract to proposed design sketches. We've already received some feedback from the Ram Skateboard Club. They agree with the smaller-scale design, but they have suggested a couple improvements that we're working into the design. Like, they want something unique that would make this park more attractive for people to use. And the skateboarders are a very passionate and dedicated group. People are willing to travel to other towns for good skate parks, and this new skate park would attract skaters from other towns. Add two pickleball courts. So this, there would be space available from the smaller skate park footprint. You can see from the picture on the lower left, the proximity of the two pickleball courts with the new skate park, and you can actually see the playscape a little bit in the background there. The, and we would use existing space and use existing fencing from the skate park. You can also see that the skate park, the new skate park designs do not have fencing all around them anymore. I guess that's a safer alternative for the kids to use. And the two pictures on the right are an actual pickleball court that is in Columbia, at their rec complex. This was built 18 months ago. It's a very popular court. This picture from inside and outside the fencing, so it's a really a top-notch pickleball court. In addition to Columbia, there's outdoor courts currently in Manchester and Wyndham, but a lot of towns are considering adding them, Glastonbury, Colchester, East Hampton, and many of these towns are considering using American Rescue Plan money to fund these new courts. So what is pickleball? Silly name, has nothing to do with pickles. It is the fastest-growing sport in America. There's almost 5 million players, which has doubled in the last five years. And it's really getting national attention. There's national tournaments broadcast on ESPN. There's three major tournaments in Connecticut every year. It's recently shown on many of the major news outlets, like the Today Show and NPR Wall Street. There's a lot of recent articles. And it's currently being planned as a demonstration sport for the 2028 Summer Olympics, which is only six years away. So, again, what is pickleball? Basically, for people that don't know, it's played on a bed-mitten-sized court with a tennis-sized net, and you can see the picture in the middle, the picture of the paddle with the balls. It's kind of like a wiffle ball, a hard wiffle ball. You can see the picture on the right. I basically hit the wiffle ball with the volley, the ball over the net. And the picture on the left, it's mostly played with doubles, so four people playing it at once. And it's really good for people of all ages. Many schools and colleges are adding pickleball. UConn in Central offer pickleball. I know it's been played at the Ram PE classes. My son took it many years ago, and many surrounding towns are offering this as part of their pickleball, for their PE classes. And it's also, it's already very popular in Hebron. We have indoor program at Gillied Hill School. We have two courts kind of lined off in their multipurpose area. The program is currently sold out, full, with 32 people. We have people on a waiting list. This was the same case last fall for the program. So it's, we have a really good base to start with already in town. So what are the benefits of pickleball? Players from eight to 80. I mean, we have, we actually have a player over 80 years old that plays. But on bigger picture, I think the town really needs more facilities in town to serve Hebron adults as well as children. We have a lot of facilities for the children, but I think there's a lot of adults looking for recreation as well. Great family activity. I personally witnessed, you know, mom and dad and the kids playing pickleball together in Columbia, so it happens. And social interaction, we get a lot of couples playing together after the kids go off to college, and they have more free time. There's a lot of health benefits. It's aerobic exercise. It really is, really is a workout. People think it isn't, but when you try it, you realize it is. You work on your balance, agility, hand-eye coordination, and there are fewer injuries. And, you know, I think the courts would attract people from other towns to come play. Craig, Craig Bryant, in his previous job in Kingston, Rhode Island, he was the rec center manager, and when he got there, there was only 10 pickleball players using one court. He built that program to over 200 players using three courts. He had tournaments in just two years. He grew that to over 200 players. And so he can do the same thing in Hebron. He's already had, he's already lined up beginner clinics for later this year. So, plan's already underway. Playscapes. So, there's two playscapes proposed. The one in the picture in the actual contract proposed configurations, in working with Craig, the one on the left is for ages two through five. You know, it stimulates imagination and social interaction. You can see they play, store, playhouse, or kind of thing together. And then the picture on the lower right is for ages five through 12. You know, encourages climbing, balancing, group activities, kind of this pyramid thing, encourages kids to play together, as well as the swings and slides. So, you know, Craig's still working with the contractor on this, but this is what it would look like today. So, potential funding source, I already mentioned the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. I think this would be a great use of these funds. I believe some of the ARPA funds were granted to Hebron to help recover some of the parking rec program revenue lost during the pandemic. So I just think it would be great if some of these funds were now used to upgrade some of the recreation facilities in town. Recent surveys have indicated that education, open space, and recreation are top reasons for families moving to Hebron. You hear that all the time, and residents want passive and active recreation in town. They don't want to have to drive to Colchester or Glastonbury. So I think this is an excellent opportunity to build recreation facilities that will provide lasting impact for the next 20 years, and it also will serve residents of all ages, children's ages two through 80. So, what does it cost? You've probably seen some of these costs already. The first group, the skate park upgrade, the pickleball courts, the playscapes, and the softball upgrades, I think should be done this year. They're all based on actual contractor quotes. As I said, and as you know, the skate park is an ice rink, needs a lot of attention. The ones on the bottom, lower half, the basketball court, security camera upgrades, vet park electrical upgrades. If you don't have the funding to do that this year, to do it all at once, you could do those probably next year. But our recommendation is to do all of these stuff, to make Veterans Memorial Park a really a first-class facility. So, just so you know, I know Parking Rec Commission didn't just, you know, dream up this list. There's a lot of other things that we considered, the recreational opportunities, but the Veterans Park upgrade is our highest priority, and that's what we recommend, that it's more urgently needed than some of the other ones. But just to go down the list for other consideration, adding a playscape at Burn Hill Park. Had the request that, you know, young children have their siblings playing in organized sports, this would give them something to do while the other kids are playing their sports. Build a dog park for off-leash activities. You've heard about that. There's been a committee formed to evaluate that. Build a disc golf course. There's been a lot of interest in this over the years. We've probably had, I think we've had three different groups come to the commission interested in moving this forward. They've talked about fundraising. I think there's a lot of interest here. Again, it's similar to skate park. There's a lot of people that are really interested and dedicated to disc golf. If you're not familiar, it's kind of like frisbee golf. It's another way of looking at it, but it's very specialized and, like I said, a dedicated following. Recreational water park, Colchester put one of these in last year, you know, where water squirts up in the ground and kids play in it. We've talked about amphitheater before for shows and concerts. The St. Peter Field upgrades, since the town purchased that property several years ago, I think there's an opportunity to make that field a better facility as well. There's always talk about enhancing trails and providing off-road parking. So I've listed three major properties here, the Hibbert property, Bernstein property, and Ray property. These are, these properties are gems. There's some trails on there already, but they would need improvement. There may be some grant opportunity to fund some of this as well, but I wanted to put on the list of other recreational opportunities. And then finally, just the paving of Burn Hill Park. About half of the road is already paved, so this would, you know, keep the dust down, keep the noise down, and make Burn Hill Park also a first-class facility. So, with that, I'll turn it over for, thank you for, thank you for the time, and turn over if there's any questions. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, Dan.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Ken, this is Mike McCormick from Board of Finance. Thank you very much for your presentation. Just a couple of questions on the pickleball courts, and I am well aware that pickleball is a very fast-growing sport, and I echo your comments about the popularity. Two questions, though, or a couple of questions. One, I know that there are a number of pickleball courts that are made or constructed, if you will, through the use of existing tennis courts. You see that at some of the indoor tennis facilities and outdoor facilities in the region. So has there been any consideration as to whether Parks and Rec can somehow use the Ram courts for pickleball and put down the lines that are often put down on these other tennis courts in other areas to convert a tennis court into multi-use, a tennis court and at pickleball? And then, along that issue, I realize that there may be issues with Ram or the ability to use the courts at particular times. If, for example, Ram is in their tennis season, people would not be able to use it for pickleball in the afternoon, or I think Ram does not allow residents to use the tennis courts while school is in session. If that's the case, has there been any consideration by the town or Parks and Rec Department to construct tennis courts, perhaps at Burn Hill Park, would probably be the most logical place? And I ask that because, you know, one thing I always question about these fast-growing sports is if we build pickleball courts and five or eight years from now, pickleball popularity goes way down, what use do we get out of simply a pickleball court versus a tennis court that can be used both for tennis by residents at any time, as well as pickleball at any time, in the event that, you know, one of those sports does not become, does not remain as popular as it is today? And I'm not asking those questions as, you know, to criticize the idea of building a pickleball court. Just curious as to whether there's been any consideration to basically construct tennis courts and get multi-use out of our money of $65,000.
Okay, great question, Mike. First of all, using a tennis court for a pickleball court is less than ideal. It's, the net is different size, dimensions are quite a bit different. What some communities have done is actually put two pickleball courts on a tennis court, or one is on each half of the court. But again, you have a temporary net then, and you have multiple lines, so it's less than ideal. There's actually, in Columbia, they built a pickleball court and a tennis court, and they have the tennis court lined with pickleball, but people only use that when the pickleball court's being used. It's only kind of an overflow area. So I would recommend against that. I really played on both, and it's, it's not really good to play on a tennis court. But that being said, years ago, we did approach Ram to see if they would mark some of the courts for pickleball before, even before it was as popular as it is now. And they would not allow that at the time. They said, a number of reasons. Again, because they're school use, and because they have school tournaments on there, they're not allowed to put extra lines on the court. And at that time also, they were having some issues with the contract on the resurfacing of the pickleball court, and they were afraid of trying to modify that and having it be, you know, kind of mess up the warranty, I guess, of the resurfacing that they had done. So we haven't approached them again recently, but that's what was the response several years ago.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if pickleball doesn't, isn't popping in a few years, we could probably think of something else to repurpose that court with, maybe we could fit a tennis court in there. I think with six tennis courts at Ram, it's a pretty good facility for people to use already. I've never heard anyone request additional tennis facility in Hebron beyond what's at Ram.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, though.
Dan, Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Other comment?
Go ahead, Mark.
Hi. I appreciate Mike's comments about fad sports and what's the longevity of them going to be if we spend that much money. Did anybody add up all the requests that are there? That's a substantial amount of money. I have another comment to make, but I'd like you guys to think about what's most important of those, what's most important to the community, not just a handful of people. I think if you had to say what's, what would serve the citizenry more, a dog park or a pickleball park, a pickleball courts, I'm sure there's more dog owners who would use it and benefit from it. So, everything is a trade-off. Our taxes are going up this year. If we can use monies from, that would be spent on things that are kind of a luxury to help with the fire department, public service, public works, issues that we're having at schools, I think we have to think about what's a priority now. So, I'm just saying, you kind of have to prioritize, and what of those things is most important to you. And being a police officer, the skate park is important to me for a lot of reasons, and I'm out there watching all the time and seeing kids, and since that, it's been in disrepair. Kids are skateboarding all over the place, and that skate park really picks a certain kind of kid who may not fit in somewhere else, or may not be accepted somewhere else. That's kind of his place to belong, his place to have something to do. So I'm really in favor of that, and I would just ask that you guys kind of prioritize what it is you want the most, because I really don't think we can do all of those. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Diane.
Thank you, Dan. Hi, Ken. Thank you, Diane Del Rosso, with the Board of Finance. Thanks for your presentation, and I really have a question around the design, having the pickleball courts so close to the skate park. And it's hard to tell from a run drawing. Is sound a consideration? I know the skate park can be quite loud, and having it so close to the pickleball courts, it would be, I think the sound might not do so great there.
That's good input. We had, did not consider the sound. I guess I wasn't aware of the skate park, which was noisy, but I guess we'll look at that, we'll consider that.
Concrete might be different than the plywood, but yeah, it was. Anybody else familiar with, Mark, you brought up the skate park, skate park sound. Do you think that it has a tendency to be loud with the number of skaters skating?
Hi, Ken. I get what you're saying, Diane. Generally, I'm there when the kids are there. I wouldn't say they're unnecessarily loud. It's not louder than an event with spectators at it. It's not louder than a soccer game. You hear the skate wheels whirring, whirling around, but I don't, it's not that loud, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily talking about the kids yelling or screaming. I'm not talking about that. It's the, it's the wheels on the, and it used to be plywood, for instance. So that could be quite loud going from one place to another, and it's just the nature of it. I'm not complaining about the kids in any way. And so I'm just suggesting that perhaps we think about whether those two venues should be so close together, and if there will need to be a sound barrier between them. That's all.
Well, the driving factor in the layout was cost, so we are trying to minimize cost. So, we're trying to use the existing fencing from the skate park, and so that's why they're so close. We could look at the layout and see if maybe we can put a gap in there, like say, a barrier, a sound barrier, or something in between. But that was the main driver for the configuration. But that's good input. We'll look at that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mel?
Thank you, Dan. Ken, nice job. Good to see the whole program now and what you're looking at in the future. Just two brief comments. Number one, and it's a question, is the or are the new playscapes, are they handicapped accessible?
Craig would have to answer that.
Yeah, I mean, so it's actually funny you mention. I'm actually taking a certification course tomorrow in playground safety, and by looking through that, everything has to be accessible at this point. There's certain things that are accessible. So, we'd have to look at what parts we need to add an easier access to or whatnot, but with specifications now, there's, there's different types of But with specifications now, there's, there's different types of accessibility.
Thanks, Craig. Yeah, I, I was involved with doing one many years ago, about ten years ago. And the cost, that, when I looked at the cost that you have up there, I'm thinking that can't be accessible. Because I know when you start making them accessible, the cost does go up, but I think it's something we need to look at. Thank you. The second, and it's, it's just a point, Ken, I agree with the pickleball, that a lot more people can play it. I also think, and I'm a big proponent of developing the open space, the parks, as well as the open space property, the trails. And when you look at our population, it's aging, and I think you find a lot more people that would take advantage of a better trail system. Not, not that we shouldn't do the pickleball courts, I'm not saying that, but I'm, I'm just saying that maybe those could be a little bit higher in priority too. But at any rate, you guys are doing a great job. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Mel. Other questions? Okay, I have a few. First off, you had two different, you had the skate park and all of those, and then you had the other rec opportunities. And the first one was three eighty and the other was four fifty. What are the funding sources were you looking at for these? Well, for the Veterans Park upgrade, we're looking for the American Rescue Plan funding for that. Which I think is consistent with what Andy had presented. That would be the two playscapes at Vets Park, that, that would be the pickleball courts. That would be the, the softball field upgrade. And that would be the skate park, pickleball, playscapes and softball field. The, the other opportunity page was just to show that, you know, there's a lot of other opportunities in town that we considered. And we're prioritizing and recommending the, the Veterans Park upgrades. There are things, we didn't, we didn't specify any, any funding recommendations on those. So that would be another year you're looking at, a future thing? It's kind of, it's kind of a future thing. I mean, some of them may never happen. But these, these are things we're always, we're always looking at, additional recreation facilities and recreational programs to grow. This kind of shows, you know, kind of working list that we have going. I think some have more momentum than others and, and, and some will be pursued. Some of them could be added to a list if there's like a second wave of American Rescue Plan funding. I know there's a second wave of money coming in later this year, so if there's a second wave of projects, I think some of these would be good candidates for that as well. I think it kind of fits, in my opinion, it kind of fits the description of the American Rescue Plan is to enhance the community and kind of, again, in my opinion, making like a lasting, permanent impression that residents can benefit from for a long time. Okay, good. Thank you. I got a couple other questions. No fencing around the skate park. How would that be managed? Well, for the last several years, the skate park has not been blocked except when it was closed, you know, after the vandalism. But years ago, we stopped charging, we stopped controlling that. We went through the, you know, the town attorney from a liability standpoint and, and we followed his recommendation. So you're actually better off to not limit access to that from a liability standpoint. Is that why you're asking for liability or? Just, I just, you know, you, you'd made comment that it wasn't fenced, and I know the old one was. You know, and I see the fencing around the pickleball courts, and I'm assuming that's to stop escaping balls? Yeah, yeah, that's, just like a tennis court, yeah, just like a tennis court. Okay, and then my other thing, and this would be my, my big, big, big pet, I don't know if you want to call it a peeve or whatever. What are you going to do with, are we doing cameras? How are we going to handle the vandalism issues? Because quite literally, I mean, Vets Park has been hit, they tried to build or burn the concession building down. I mean, they, they've tried everything in the world, so. Yeah, I totally agree. That's why under the project costs, the second group, I did have veteran security camera upgrade on that. So I, I know that some of the cameras we have today, that they're not very high quality. It's hard to to actually capture people vandalizing that property. Plus the cameras are lower, so sometimes they can, you know, take them out. What Columbia did is they kind of mounted it a little higher on a pole, so there's a wider range of viewing on that. But you need a higher quality camera for that. So, you know, Craig would have to spec that out, but that's the plan. If there's money to do it this year, it's not, it's not the budget this year, but I listed it under the, you know, the whole Veterans Park upgrade package. I, I, I agree we should do it. I, I would like to see the cameras, you know, the securities, whatever, put in rather than putting a lot of money into a project and then, you know, having it vandalized or destroyed. You know, and yeah, I'd like to get the protection in there. I just think that's important, especially if we are potentially putting this kind of dollars into that facility to not have it adequately watched, safeguarded. You know, just if nothing else, just some of the things that you hear that go on nowadays, you know, with, with people, you know, and, and children or whatever. I just, I think cameras, security would be a very positive thing to have. I'm not sure what would be involved, you know, where, where the monitoring would be done or that type of stuff, but that's just kind of my thought. It'd be nice to know what that cost would be. Okay, we'll move that up, up the priority then and have Craig do some work there. I know the Ram, Ram has some excellent cameras over there, so that's a good starting point. Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? Andy?
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments for the Parks and Recs, next on the agenda is the fire and ambulance departments, and we have the chief, Peter Starkell. I'm not sure if he has anybody else with him or not, but we'll start with Peter. Peter, take it away.
Good evening, everybody, and, and thank you. And I'll, I'll ask in advance, please bear with me. This is my first budget cycle with you guys. And, and so I appreciate all the help that I've gotten so far in, in, in working on our budgets. So we have a couple of projects, proposed projects for the upcoming year that I wanted to, to talk about. The, the first of which was a request for a replacement of our hydraulic rescue tools. Commonly referred to as the jaws of life. So, so we're proposing that we upgrade our, our current tools that are, that are housed on our rescue truck with what's called the e-drolic tools. And e-drolic tools are rescue tools that are battery operated. They're battery-powered tools. So they're, they're not tied to the truck, they're not corded. You don't need a generator or a pump to, to operate these. You, you just, you need a battery. And some of the benefits of these, these tools are, again, they're portable. So they're not attached or affixed to one particular piece of apparatus. So if, if we have them on our rescue truck and the truck goes out of service for maintenance, we can take the tools off and put them in the back of our pickup truck. And we can still provide the service that we need to. So that's a nice thing. They're portable. We can take them into the woods in our utility vehicles. We can take them into buildings. They're, they're, they're quick and easy. So if we pull up to an accident scene, we can literally get off the truck, grab the tools and immediately go to work. Believe it or not, these battery-operated tools have more cutting power, more pushing power and more pulling power than our, than our current hydraulic tools. So, you know, through technology, you know, our, our tools that we have now, they're great, they're great, they, they, they do the job. But, but these e-drolic tools will give us a lot more versatility and, and a lot more ability to do things that we aren't able to do now. So right now, we're, we're kind of limited to the length of the cord on the truck. That's as far as we can go with our tools. But with the e-drolic tools, we can take them anywhere. So that's, that's one of the first projects that we have. The second project that I wanted to just mention was we are in desperate need of replacing one of our inflatable boats, which is currently housed on our, our company too, down on Church Street. The current boat's an eighteen-foot inflatable boat, which is currently deflated. It's got a lot of leaks. We've, we're, we've been chasing that. We have to fill it up with air weekly. So we're looking to replace that with a, with a newer, or with a new boat, rather, fourteen-foot boat that's a little more maneuverable and a little more fits our, fits our needs. It's portable. We can actually pick it up and carry it and move it around. Whereas the, the current boat, we really can't, can't do that due to the size and, and the weight of the motor. So those are the, kind of the, the two larger projects that we have slated or that we're requesting for the upcoming fiscal year. Any, any questions on those two before I move on?
Is the boat going to be another inflatable? Because at one time we had a aluminum, you know, flat-bottomed boat. And then that was deemed to not be the boat we needed. We needed the inflatable. They got rid of or relocated that boat, went to the inflatable. So what's, what type of style, what's the style of this boat?
Yeah, so it's actually a rigid bottom inflatable. It would be, excuse me, fourteen-foot rigid bottom inflatable. It's actually, the, the ones that we've been looking at are made by Defender down in Waterford. So with the rigid bottom, a little more durable, you know, and, and some of the waterways that we'd encounter where, you know, that's, it's, it's shallow and we have stumps and sticks and stuff. So a, a little bit, you know, the old boat is, is a soft bottom inflatable. So the, the rigid bottom is definitely the, the way to go. And it, again, versus the aluminum, a little more maneuverable. You know, we're able to pick it up and move it. It does, the proposed boat has a forty-horse Honda, which is a two-stroke. The current boat is a, has a forty-horse Yamaha, which is a four-stroke motor. And it, just the motor itself takes probably three or four people just to pick it up and move it. It's, it's, it's a little clumsy, so. But yeah, we, we would definitely go something with a rigid hull on it, just to.
Yes, sir.
Chief, are, are those similar to the Zodiac boats? We see use a rigid bottom boat on the marine rescue and dive team in Hartford, and those things are phenomenal.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's very similar to, to Zodiac. Again, the brand is Defender. In my, my previous job, I actually bought a very similar boat, Defender. Again, they're, they're in Waterford. They're great to deal with. And the boats are pretty stout. You can do a lot with them. This particular model actually has a, a bench seat and a, and a console versus, you know, just steering with the, you know, with the, with the motor itself, with the tiller. So it's, it's, it's a pretty sharp boat, and I think we could do a lot with it.
Can you, can you use that for ice rescues too, when you're not sure of the ice, whether it supports walking out there? Can, can you go out there with that, pull it with the rope? So you can still make a dangerous rescue and, and keep, keep your firefighter safe?
Yeah, so we could use that boat in a situation where there was ice, but maybe the ice, you know, wasn't thick enough to support, you know, us just walking out. We also actually this year purchased an ice rescue sled. Which is, you get on, on your belly and you can pull yourself out. It, it floats. You slide it in the water, slide the victim right up on it, you attach the victim to it and you pull the rescuer and the victim right out. So that, that's, that's something we invested in this year. And we've used it a couple of times in training. It, it's, it's an awesome piece of equipment. But if push came to shove, you could pop the motor off the inflatable and you could use it in a situation like you described.
Thanks, chief. And the, the cordless jaws of life are phenomenal additions and make things faster, easier. I mean, just saving lives is a priority. And this is kind of what I'm talking about when you're making decisions about what is a priority, what's needed, when you're triaging things about what we're going to spend money on. This, this is, this, this is where you got to draw the line between saving lives and doing something that is for leisure or recreation, and I get that. But I, I, that's, that's a point that we need to make. We can't just keep burdening taxpayers because everybody wants something. I'm done.
One, one of the things, if I could just comment too, one of the things with the e-drolic tools, you know, long-term is maintenance. So there's a lot less maintenance with, with these tools. You know, you're, you're not maintaining a huge generator on the apparatus. You're not maintaining the, you know, the, the pumps and you know, pretty, pretty much the, the maintenance on, on these would be, you know, replacing batteries when, when, when the batteries get to the end of their useful life. So maintenance cost and actual maintenance is a lot less, not just on the tools, but the apparatus that they're attached to. Because again, we don't need those big power plants on the truck, and we don't need the generators and the separate pumps, which typically is where these tools, you have the issues with the pumps failing or leaking or the generator issues. So long-term, this is definitely the, the, the direction to go. Cause then it's going to save on, on maintenance and, and, and the long duration.
Thank you. Mike, you had a question?
Yes, chief, just a quick question. I may not be looking at the right sheet, piece of paper in my budget book. But is this, I guess, some questions, what's the estimated cost for this boat? And is the expense anticipated to be paid out of American Rescue Plan funds?
So the, the estimate for the, the boat, the most recent estimate, because it's changed a couple of times and just in the past few months, like everything else. The, the total price was about twenty-two thousand five hundred and five, and that was for the boat, motor and a trailer. And that, I just got an updated quote from, from Defender not too long ago. You know, our, or, or my assumption is that this would be a project that would, would fit into the American Rescue funding.
Okay, the, the reason why I asked that question is, and maybe Andy can assist us. I'm looking at proposed capital outlay sheet in our budget book, and it has a line item for marine. And it just says ARPA funds with no estimated cost. Is marine, the marine expense, the, the boat we're talking about? Okay, and then it looks like there's a projection of another twenty thousand next year. Any idea what that is for the marine? Or is that something, is that the same boat?
That, that would be one and the same. Our original projection was, was around twenty, and then when we just got our most recent estimate from the, from the vendor, it had bumped up a little bit, so.
Okay, so if we're looking at, at this sheet, if, if this request is approved for this year, it's anticipated that the expense would be paid out of ARPA funds. And the twenty thousand dollars that's on the plan for next budget year would not be necessary.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, please.
Okay, so another future project that, that we're talking about would be just an apparatus replacement. So a, a goal would be at some point to, to consolidate some apparatus and, and obtain what's called a rescue pumper. Real quick, you know, rescue pumper, we have our fire engines and we have our heavy-duty rescue truck. A rescue pumper would be you know, two for one. It would be a combination of those two pieces. Fire engine that would carry all of our current rescue equipment. And a, a couple, a couple of reasons why we think this, this would be beneficial to, to the town at, at, at some point. So because of reduced staffing, less staffing, instead of having to worry about getting two pieces of apparatus there, we've got one piece of apparatus that's got all the equipment that we need, fire suppression equipment and rescue equipment, all, all in one. Again, long-term, less, less maintenance, instead of maintaining separate pieces of app, two separate pieces, we've got one. You know, as I mentioned, with, with the electric tools, less maintenance. This apparatus, we wouldn't have to have a thirty K generator on it. We'd have a very small generator. All the new lighting is LED, which, which takes a lot less. Most of the equipment now, believe it or not, being sold, chainsaws, fans, every, everything is, is becoming battery-operated. No more, no more gas-powered stuff. So, and another, another big reason is, you know, that, that project you know, that that project became important to me was currently, it's going to change, but currently there's no, we don't have a dedicated, we don't have, we don't have a fire engine out of company one. Our first response piece is our ladder truck, which is our our biggest and our most expensive piece of apparatus. You know, replacement on on that ladder truck now is probably getting close to one point five million. So that was being run first to emergencies and it only carries four hundred gallons of water. So again, another reason for looking at a rescue pumper down the road would be to get an actual fire engine here. Which would take the place of of basically two pieces of apparatus that would allow us to move the ladder truck to a, you know, to a backup position where it's only responding to calls where it's actually needed. Instead of running it constantly to to, you know, fire alarms and and calls where we really don't need a ladder truck. Saving on that vehicle, my, one of my goals is is to prolong the use of that ladder truck as for as long as we can. It's in great shape and I'd like to keep it that way. So that the the less we use it, the better we take care of it. We're going to prolong the life and save the town quite a few dollars and and in the end, but so that's a that's a project that that we're we're working on. I absolutely understand financial and fiscal constraints. That's something that that we're we're working on and going to continue to work on. You know, for the future. At some point, I'd be happy to have a vendor bring one up if you guys wanted to, you know, actually take a look at it and see what it is. We could, you know, we could get somebody here and you could come on over and and take a look and we could walk you through and kind of give you, you know, if you a a look at it, so you could actually, you know, envision what it would do for the town of Hebron. So so that's something we're working on. You know, that the fire apparatus industry right now is it's it's all over the place. I talked to a vendor a couple of months ago and they said, yeah, build times are twelve to fourteen months. And in that short couple of months between then and now, it's about two years to get a piece of fire apparatus from the day you order it till the date they deliver it. They can't get materials. They can't get raw materials to to build these things. So again, a project we're working on for the future. But again, most certainly, if anybody wants to see something like that, I'd be happy to arrange a little show and tell. Same thing with the e-drolic electric rescue tools. I could get my hands on a couple of those if if folks really wanted to see them, I'd be I'd be happy to to give a little demo on that, too.
Mel?
Yes, chief, one question about the this truck. I understand
Yes, sir.
that this truck has, is it a thousand gallons of water or three thousand gallons of water?
But so it, yes, it would be between seven, they're between seven fifty and a thousand. And really, when you're when you're designing it, it's it's those couple hundred extra gallons affect the height and the length. So it's between seven fifty and a thousand.
Okay, and I understand that's important. The concern I had heard from one of the fire, one of the members of the department was, is there enough room on that truck to store all the other? Yes, you're you're only going to send one truck, but are you going to have to leave some essential equipment behind? Or will it all fit?
No, great, great question. So the the trucks are, and I don't want to say they're cookie cutter trucks, but the manufacturers design these with space in mind. So this particular truck, again, it doesn't have the thirty K generator on it. So there's a there's there's freed up space there. And it doesn't, we don't have to have storage areas for the hydraulic pumps for the equipment. So so there's a lot of room. A lot of departments around us are are buying them. We've we've gone out just to take some field trips and and look just to see, you know, can we, can you fit everything that you have on these two and in this one? And and so far, the answer is, is yeah, it looks like you can. The trucks are also configured. They've got a different pump. The the pumps are, they're not PTO pumps. The the pumps in these trucks are driven right off the flywheel. So the pumps are a little bit smaller. They're more efficient. They're smaller. They're really easy to work on and maintenance is is apparently a lot less too. So so long, long story short, yes, we think we can fit everything that we have that we need on on a combination piece like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Other questions? So would you be getting rid of the rescue truck or what would the shifting of of apparatus look like?
Great question. So so yes, if if this came to fruition, it it would replace the heavy rescue, Dan, which is slated to be replaced a few years down the road, but that would replace the heavy rescue. Again, because we're just starting it, you know, we don't actually have a fire engine here in headquarters that it would replace, but it would replace the rescue truck. So that that would be the first one to go. And then possibly at some point, one of the older engines would would go as well.
Okay. And you're talking about relocating the ladder. Where do you think you would relocate that? Or have you gotten that far in the thought process?
So, yeah, so actually, we we wouldn't relocate it, but it would go from responding first out the door, Dan, to the secondary, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Pete.
Any any questions on the operational side?
Yeah, let's, if if anybody has any questions on his operating budget, I wasn't here last week. I'm not sure if they went through his twenty ten budget to twenty twenty. Is there any questions on that? If we can highlight any of the changes or if somebody has a specific question, we're not trying to. You know, now we have Peter here. I mean, Elaine, you can probably hit the highlights for Peter, seeing it's his first first budget show.
Andy, how are we going down? And I think it looks like electricity. We're going down fifteen hundred bucks?
Well, like I said, the page, if we're going to do that, let everybody get to the page in the book. It's page. It's budget number ten, twenty ten and twenty twenty. Page fifteen and it's up on the screen. And Elaine, you can answer those questions as as things change. You can answer what's going on with the electricity now.
So as with every department and all of the utilities, we take the last twelve months' most frequent bills and come up with the estimated costs and give a three percent, and that's what is total equated to for a necessity. If you look at last year's final, it was twenty five thousand two thirty two. We budgeted twenty eight, four twenty one for this year, but based on the actuals for the last twelve months, our calculations came out to twenty six, eight eighty three needed for next fiscal year, which is a decrease from the current adopted budget, but is still an increase over the twenty twenty one final. We we do that with all of the utilities in every department.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. So once again, we're we're bumping up, if there's nothing on our front page, just to be transparent, we're bumping up Peter's, the chief's hours a little bit. We're trying to head towards, eventually the plan was for the people that don't know, eventually we're going to have a full time fire chief. But we're not there, not there yet, but we're we're slowly getting there. I think we're at least a little bit more than halfway there. So there's an increase to that line. I don't know, is anything else jump out? Or do you want Elaine to go down where the the increases are?
Well, I was going to say, the big question that I would have is, I know that there's there's been discussion of putting on more more personnel on weekends. Are those dollars in this budget or where does that sit at this point?
Excuse me, Elaine, you can answer that.
EMS responder costs are in twenty twenty, not twenty ten, Dan. So this is the twenty ten, which is more for the fire department and the building operational needs. But there is EMS responder was kind of flat funded, but we increased in depart, unless there's other questions in twenty ten. I don't know if you want to jump to twenty twenty.
No, I'm sorry. I'll wait till twenty twenty.
So Peter has a few increases. There's some vehicle maintenance has a five thousand dollar increase. And if memory serves me correctly, chief, that's due to necessity of tire replacements for next year.
Yeah, so for the upcoming year, we've got some tires to replace, which are not inexpensive. So we've got a couple of pieces of apparatus that are that are overdue for tire replacement. NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, states that it used to be ten years. They wanted tires changed. Now they want them changed every seven years. We're a little over the seven year mark, but so we've got to replace some tires. But the other side of this is the tires that are coming off are still in good shape and can be used by public works. So there's still some value left to them, so. But yeah, there that that's where that five thousand increases. It's it's tires, it's tires.
Other increases for uniform allowance and building repairs and maintenance. I mean, it's just normal upkeep and increased costs affiliation. And then the nine one one emergency expense with TN is going up by twenty two hundred dollars. And those were the major bullet points for twenty ten.
Is there any questions on any of those?
Yes, that's all the the every year, general increase item increases.
I I'm not sure where it is. And if it's coming later, that's fine. I I'm curious as to how we're doing. I know in the last couple of years, we've added funds to have people on calls, but we didn't have, we didn't have calls where we had to go to other towns. So I mean, I'm sure our activities have increased and I'm just wondering how our percentage of calls we're able to cover as well as the dollars we're spending to do that.
So in this current fiscal year, if you if you look at the per diem payroll line, it's the third line down. We increased the per diem line from thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars to eighty thousand. So we accommodated for that necessity in that payroll line. So there's eighty thousand, there's, and we bumped that up by a grand. So there's eighty one thousand in that line for next year. And then there's still the EMS responder dollars, which is in the twenty twenty department budget as well. But the weekends and overnight calls, that's where that those dollars are funded is in the per diem line.
Thanks, Elaine. Chief, how are we doing in in covering calls? Are we doing, you know, are we able to cover more calls ourselves or is that still an issue?
Yep. So so with the overnight staffing, so we have two EMTs on from from midnight to eight AM covering the overnight shift. That has certainly helped with calls. Between between the hours of like three, four in the morning and like eight in the morning, that was the tough time when when we were having some issues because people have to get up and go to their regular job and they couldn't commit the calls. So that that was the 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 tough spot and 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 we've done well. The overnight program's done well. The the really, one of the biggest issues we have are finding people who want to work. We've, you know, we have a core group of staff. We're trying to add some depth to that. But it's it's tough. We 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 can't find people who 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 want to come and work. We we've been successful in the past couple of months. We've got a couple, a couple of new folks who are being on boarded and and are ready to work, so that's going to help. So that overnight hour, that program has definitely helped. One of our goals for the for the upcoming year is, as Dan had mentioned, was is we're looking to provide some coverage on the weekends. Weekends are very difficult. We're, it's just, and and we're not the only ones, but but weekends are are very tough, you know. I've got a lot of folks who are working multiple jobs and by the time the weekend rolls around, they're they're exhausted, you know, they just, they need the weekend to to reset themselves for for the upcoming weekend. So we've struggled a bit on weekends. One of our our proposals would be to, with some reallocation of funds, would be to to have staff on Saturday and Sunday during the daytime. To help with those, that's that's our next tough spot is is the weekend days.
How about our activity in general? I mean, I I know we went up a a large amount, especially on the ambulance stuff between the last year and the year before. Are we still increasing there?
Yeah, so a great question. So our our level of activity, our our calls for service have definitely increased. La- last year, calendar year, you know, we topped off at about eleven hundred and forty calls for service, which was it was a a couple hundred call increase. So it it's getting busier. As our as our population gets older, demographics change a little bit, too. The 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 call volume is increasing and is going to increase. And and again, we're we're doing it with with less people, too, so. I I, you're welcome.
Good. Yeah, yes.
Yeah, do we want to go through the twenty twenty?
I would suggest, yes, please.
Okay, good.
Okay, so the twenty twenty budget, other than the contractual services line, was pretty much flat funded. The contractual services is for paramedic services. And based on the actual, which has been the last three years, that line's been pretty much severely overdrawn, resulting in transfers from other departments for coverage. So you'll notice the twenty twenty one fiscal year final was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The budget was a hundred and seven for this year, and we bumped it up by fifty one thousand five hundred for next year. And that's pretty much all that's happening in that department.
Do you want to just state what contractual services includes, please?
It's it's mostly for the paramedic services, but chief can probably answer to what else is in that line, but it's mostly for the paramedic services.
Yeah, so contractual services would be, so with our our contract with Wyndham Hospital, we receive paramedic services directly from Wyndham Hospital. So a a good portion of 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 that line goes to them. Part of that line goes to our our billing agent. You know, fees associated with paying our our billing company, the company that that bills insurance and and brings in the ambulance revenue. That's another big chunk of that. You know, part of the contractual services too would be, you know, we have service contracts for ambulance equipment, stretchers and and so forth. That would fall in there, too, but that's that's a small portion of that.
So then I would assume, Dan Larson here, I would assume that some of that money is actually recouped from the ambulance billing. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
That's just, it's always been kind of a little peeve of mine that we see the expenses. We don't necessarily always see the the income. Yeah, I look at it, go, oh, my God.
Revenue, you see it.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, but, you know, we're looking at this, you know, oh, my God, fifty one thousand. But there's actually money coming in to offset that, that we kind of sort of don't see.
Right.
This is the problem with the new software. When we did the budget in the Excel workbook, we used to indicate with the expense what the offsetting revenue was. But I don't have that luxury with the accounting software now to provide that with the expense. So it is just quotes in all of your revenue.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Dan, that that's what, you know, with the increase in call volume, too, you, you know, you see, hopefully you see a spike in in income, hopefully.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Andy.
Yeah, just quickly, just reiterate. So thank you, chief, for that explanation. I was going to say that. But also what we're trying to do, and we do it all the other accounts as we go through, this is more of an actual adjustment. As Elaine stated, we bumped this up. This isn't an actual, just an increase this year with the contractual. This isn't an actual, just an increase this year with the contractual services. We're trying to bring it more into an actual budgeting number that we've been paying. We've been robbing Peter to pay Paul for a couple of years. So we want to be, this is what the actual cost is, including some increased calls. But it still may continue to go up, but there is an offsetting revenue.
And we did bump that revenue somewhat too for this upcoming budget as well.
Yeah.
That's why I just, I, I, it's important to note because people that are listening to this are seeing that increase, not realizing that there is an offsetting revenue source for that, for that item. You know, just trying to get that out there. So any other questions? Okay, I guess please continue.
Okay, um, I think that's it for the fire department unless anybody has any overall questions of the chief while he's here. They're going once. Okay, so next up on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is the Public Works Department. We have with us the Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Kelly. And those accounts would be 4101, 4102, 4103, and 4104. Kevin, why don't we start, now that we have our budget books open, why don't we just go right to the operating budget first? And then we'll talk about capital projects after that, if that's okay with everyone.
Just want to thank Pete. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you guys. I appreciate it. Again, being my first year, I really appreciate all the help that everyone's giving me and I'm, I'm, I'm loving it here. I really am. Thank you very much.
Great job, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. I actually got two budgets to talk about tonight. The first one being the Public Works budget. With me, I have Ben Gilmore from WPCA, who's going to give us some technical support if we need it with some questions. So anyhow, working on the operating budget for Public Works, just going to highlight the stuff that's had increases. If anybody has any questions, please interrupt me. Starting with the 4101 account. The first one that stands out is the overtime payroll. There's an increase. Right now, we're about 9,000 over in that line. And that's without last weekend storm. I haven't gotten that information yet. The reason this year for that is a lot of these storms this year have been on the weekends, Sundays and on the holidays, as in Martin Luther King Day. So these guys have been putting in a lot of hours on the weekends. So it tends to cut costs quite a bit more than the regular overtime that they work. Working down the list, the next one that stands out is vehicle repairs. We maintain about 65 pieces of equipment that includes park and rec, the town hall, cars, the police, the senior center vehicles. And as everybody know, the prices are going up every year for all the parts and all the maintenance that go along with it. This time this year, we are in March and I have $2,200 left. Bumping at 4,500 is still probably going to be on the light side. This is consistently going over every year. We do the best we can, but with the older vehicles, it tend to cost a little bit more. Working down quite a ways before we see another increase, some questions I'm sure will be from gas and diesel with the prices where they are. And that comes from Elaine, she takes care of that over finance. So I'm sure she's got her hands full with the prices the way they are right now. Going down the list here, the next one that stands out is storm drain cleaning. And this year, the bid from Creok is up to 2535 per basin. We usually get a deal from the same vendor because they come in every year. It's the same vendor. They know what's in these basins and the sedimentation structures per the MS4 license that we have to abide by for deep. We have to clean these annually as long, as well as sweeping every year. We have 1,572 basins in town. And that's without all the sedimentation structures and vortex structures up at the lake. Street markings, the crack up price for that went up from $355 a mile last year to $443 a mile this year. So we usually stripe about 43 miles of road each year. It's about half of the roads in town. We just stagger them and alternate year by year. The road repair materials, we have an increase of 4,679. Once again, we're considering all the price increases on pipe and stone. This is for all the stuff that we do in-house. For an example, last year, we replaced all the drainage crossings on East Street. Placed all the drainage crossings on Borough Hill Road. This year, we have a bunch to do on Joan Street. We have about 1,000 feet of underdrain to put in on Oakley Road. These kind of things, this what comes out of this line here. And this is offset a little bit by the TAR funding from the state. Other winter materials, we usually use about 1,415 tons of treated salt each year. That's where we're anticipating $76 a ton for the salt. This also covers the ice melt for what Park and Rec uses on sidewalks through the center of town. This includes all the snow plow blades for the truck. It includes all the mailboxes and posts that get damaged and we replaced as part of town policy. Moving down to Creok, there is an increase of $1,580. And that's the hazardous waste regional disposal that the local town is doing. That's done over in Manchester. Our assessment this year is $2,140. And plus the number of cars that we have to pay for, for each car and the paint disposal. Last year was $14,420. This year, we proposed $14,150. And the big one here is the solid waste and the bulky waste. The contract, the, the vet that we use got bought out. The price has gone up this year to, the MSW is going to be $90 a ton. Last year, we did 1,255 tons, about $100 a ton. And last year, we did 647 tons. This is offset by the fees that are charged at the transfer station. Single stream recycling, we are now paying, to get rid of this, $32.46 a ton. Last year, we did 474 tons. This contract is up for renegotiation this year. So that's something we're going to be working on. We're hoping we can hold it somewhat reasonable cost or something close to what we're doing now. Does anybody have any questions?
There's, Dan Larson here, they're still paying for the cardboard, for the recyclables. How's, how's that program going? Are what we're, what we're collecting, is that number going up or down?
It went up about $2.46 a ton this year. The problem is the markets aren't the way they used to be. Now, we have to pay for the single stream substantially less than the municipal solid waste. Because if we weren't recycling, we'd be paying $90 a ton in place. So we can only hope these markets are going to change in the future.
Okay. It's, I thank you for all the different things that we are able to recycle. You know, the mattresses, the electronics, you know, a lot of towns do not have any of, of those items being recycled and they have to pay to get rid of them. So I think we're very, very fortunate. Thank you for the work you've done to try to line all these different places up. Yeah. Garbage is definitely a problem. Anybody have any questions?
If there's no questions, I'll move on if you like.
Please.
All right, um, I wanted to talk about the CIP funding this year and the, the bond funding that we've been working on for the last two years. First of all, I want to get, let you know some of the things we've done with this bond money. Okay, we did all the parking lots at Hebronell, Gilead School two years ago and Firehouse Number Three Parking Lot. We did the parking lot behind Main Street down by McCorson's, also the one at Number 14 Main Street. We paved John Horton Boulevard. We chipped old Colchester Road. East Street was paved. West Street was milled and paved. West Street Extension was paved. Borough Hill Road was milled and paved. Right now, there's about $230,000 left on the bond. We plan on using that for this year. We had, Oakley Road had some bad frost problems this year. So we're going to spend some money and try to fix that up and put some drainage in there and see what we can do for paving part of that anyhow, at least part of it. The rest, we were planning on doing Joan Street as far as we can. But I don't think we're going to have enough money to finish that. So we'll get as much done as we can on, on Joan Street. In addition, this year, we won a grant from Lotsip, which is the local transportation improvement program. And we won that for the reconstruction of Martin Road. Right now, it's in the survey and planning stage. The town is responsible for all the design work on that project. And that's going to come to about $238,000. We're also responsible for the construction administration, which I'm going to touch on later because I asked for funding in the capital outlay for that. The total bond project cost was $2,984,400. So this was a substantial grant to the town. In addition, this year in CIP, we were asking for $311,583. It's for the road resurfacing and road improvements. The original request was 500,000. The roads that are in my target of attention right now are Indian Field Road, Jan Drive and Hope Valley Road. This, this $300,000 will not accomplish that goal. This will get maybe a third of it. Hopefully, we can stretch this out, find another, another way to do something. But no, we need substantial funds to finish this stuff. Back when VHB did a, a road analysis back in 2019, they made a recommendation that the town should increase the condition of the road, it's called the PCI rate, this is six over the next five years. They said a 2, 2.5 million dollar bond will be needed, which we got. A lot of $150,000 in the first year. Followed by a million dollars a year for three years. It's just to bring the PCI up to 76 from 74. Roads are cheaper to maintain while they're in better condition. They're safer and they allow for cheaper maintenance for the residents. So to keep from falling behind, we have to keep this in mind in future years when we're budgeting for road improvements. Does anybody have any questions about the roads before I move on?
Sure, one quick question. Do you have any indication of what the cost of asphalt is going to be this year?
I don't, and it's got me nervous right now. That changes, the price of the asphalt won't be bad. It's the escalation charges that come along with it is what's going to get us. Because every day, they see what the price is on the docks down in New Haven. They pride the price of asphalt to meet that. So the way it's going now, I anticipate probably $15 on surge air. So, but you know, just in the last few days, it's gone down. And the price of the asphalt will do the same. It'll follow the trends. So that's how that works.
Thank you. Continue, yes.
Okay, well, last year, we partially funded Dump Truck 26. It's a 2003 International. It's 19 years old. We've requested the remaining balance to fund this truck of $145,000. It's just, this is a truck that needs to be replaced. It's just to the age now that it has to be retired. We're doing every, everything we can to extend the life of the trucks that we do have. We did, were able to get some funding, I think it was $32,800 the Board of Finance gave us for the funding of a truck body. And we put that on Truck Two, which was in need of a new conveyor, both the lift and the side dump cylinders, and it was showing extreme rust. We're anticipating by doing this, that we extended the life of this truck by five years. We're hoping that we can do the same thing next year for Truck 46 that is up for replacement next year. If we can, right now, we're looking at the chassis and the motor. And it looks like it's in pretty good shape. If we can do the same thing with a new truck body on this truck next year, it will save a lot of money, a substantial amount of money. So trucks now are going for about $260,000, just around, give you a round number. So then, you know, if we can extend the life wherever we can, that's what we're doing. Also, also last year, we partially funded the replacement of Truck 15, which is the roll-off truck that hauls the dumpsters from the transfer station. This year, we're requesting $168,505 to complete the funding. Right now, it's got 377,660 miles on it. 18,430 hours. Our mechanic, Jeff here, is very concerned about the motor is showing age. It's starting to smoke, needs, it's probably going to need to be rebuilt soon. The last time we built a similar motor, it cost us $38,232. That's a substantial cost. So we're hoping that while this truck has got some good value to it, you know, we can either trade it in or send it to auction and replace this with, with the truck. This is a truck that hauls every day of the week. So, you know, this sees a lot more service than the plow trucks do. This is heavy duty hauling all the time, puts on a lot of miles. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I do. Two questions, Mike McCormick from Board of Finance, Mr. Kelly. The large dump truck says replaces Truck 26. If my notes are correct from last year, there was a request for funding to replace Truck 24. Is there a typo or are we dealing with two different trucks?
I think what happened was that they decided that Truck 24 is a 2005. Truck 26 is a 2003. Truck 26 is in worse condition at this time, so that's why they did that. I'm not sure why 24 was in there last year, to be honest.
So I guess my question is, is this $145,000 the second year funding? Or was the funding last year used for a different truck?
No, it's the second year of funding. Last year was funded $100,000.
Okay, and then similar question for Truck 15. It looks like last year there was a request for 50,000. And I'm just curious as to why it's triple the funding for this year.
Believe last year, we got 100,000 for that truck. If I'm wrong, please let me know. And this year, we are requesting $68,505.
Hi, it's Donna. I think I can respond to that. We, we funded it 50,000 last year and I believe 50,000 the year before.
Thank you, Donna.
So I still, what's the reason for the three times the increase from the last two years to this year?
Because that's the, the remaining amount to fund the truck.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and? Oh, yes, yes, go ahead.
Um, Kevin, you, you just took us through the, the, the story of the two trucks, 24 and 26. Um, and it sounds like uh, determined that one truck, the, the truck that we funded one year uh, was in better shape than the truck we're funding this year. Um, so I'm assuming we're gonna buy that second truck this year. Uh, what about the other truck? Is that coming up right away? I mean, if it was on the list to be replaced now, and it's just marginally better than, than the truck that we've decided to replace? Are we looking?
Truck 24 is pushed out the year 24, 25.
But we funded it last year?
No, we funded um, Truck 26 partial last year, for the, yeah, last year, 100,000.
And we're funding Truck 26 this year?
26 is gonna be the truck replaced.
Okay, that's inconsistent with what Mike just went through.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak up. It's consistent, it's inconsistent with the notes from last year. I'm looking at last year's request, and it indicates there was a request for $100,000 for Truck 24. So was Truck 24 funded, or was Truck 26 funded?
As far as I know, it was 26 that was funded, because I have it in 24, 25 on my list, and it's two years newer of a truck. It's a 2005, and 26 is a 2003. So it could be a typo, but we normally go by the oldest truck. We don't replace them until they're like, like this one now. 26 is gonna be, what, 19 years old, Kevin?
Yeah, 2003 from, yeah, 19 years.
And Truck 24 is what year?
Truck 24 is a 2005.
Okay, so there might have been a typo, but we were always trying to replace the older truck, but we, like you guys, you'll see next year, there'll be another typo, because we put a body on one of the trucks that was in the five-year plan that now pushed that out. So I'm not sure what quite happened to 24 and 26, but 26 is the older plow truck, similar, same truck, just older. Yeah, we pushed, that truck, the body, we took that out of the um, the list, and we pushed that out to 28 because of that new body. So we're hoping that next year, we can do the same thing with Truck 46, because we just did an evaluation of the chassis on that truck and the motor, thinking that it in pretty good shape. We're hoping if we put a body on that one, we can kick that one out with a few years too.
Andy, do we have a, the, that 30-year plan on vehicle replacement? I mean, I don't think we ever saw one last year.
Yeah, we have it. I think it's a 25-year plan.
Or 25, whatever it is. I mean, I think that would be easier for us to follow and to maintain, and things are gonna change. I think everybody understands.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Five-year plan is just that. It's a forecast, and then as you get through it, with the, with the mechanic we have, he reevaluates the equipment each year. You know, the, the larger plow trucks, I don't know how many we have that are similar. Then we have a couple somewhat smaller, and then the smaller ones, but there's a bunch of larger ones, but the rule of thumb is we normally start looking to replace them at 15 years. By the time they get fully funded, they're like 19 or 20 years old, and um, we're pushing them as far as we can.
If, if we had that list, that would reduce a, a lot of the questions. I mean, we could start the conversation by, okay, what changed from this year to next year in terms of when something's being replaced? And then from there, that point on, it would be easy to cross-reference. Right now, I'm still confused about that. We don't need to go any further with it, but I'm still confused with the 24 and 26. And I hear you, it might have been a typo, but.
Well, either way, we have the list. We have the list. But even with the 25-year list, we have the mechanic evaluate the trucks, and we try to replace some, the worst, the worst shape.
Understand.
Yeah, it's, we have the list, we can share that with you. If the truck is funded, it'll be well over a year from the time of the order till you get the truck, so it's just, it takes a long time to get them.
Okay.
The other, another thing I had to talk about is the capital outlay request, and as I mentioned before, um, we put in the Martin Road Construction Administration inspection and asked for $25,000, because um, that is the responsibility of the town. And the cost for that is gonna be outside of the calendar year for the bond money. So then we're gonna, we have to plan over, over next winter, so that's why we have to fund that there. Um, the other thing is an additional roll-off container at the transfer station for $14,796. Um, we've put a couple of new containers down there, but the, some of the old ones are falling apart on us, and we're trying to hold them together best we can. We've been doing a lot of welding and fabrication, but we could use a container down there. And that's all I have. If anybody has any more questions on that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Then I'm gonna move to the WPCA. Requested that I bring some numbers for that. This is preliminary for us. Donna, did you want to put that on the screen? This budget is showing last year's numbers and this year's numbers. I'm missing a sheet here. Let's go and do without it. All right, the user fees usually go over with Adrian. Um, you see what she's anticipating. Um, she's got some delinquent going on from last year, so we're anticipating a little bit less. It's $540,178 this year, down about $10,000 from last year. Uh, lean fee, she, she gave me a number of $96. The interest rate went up a little bit, the 22, 250 for the interest fees. Permit fees were holding about the same at 400. And connection fees is a new line that we just added. Um, we usually charge new customers a charge to connect. Um, right now, we're anticipating about $1,496. Um, some of the fees that came in last year in connection weren't shown on here. I know there's a couple of properties up on Barber land, and one in the center of town that I know came in for another $8,000, so that comes into the revenues. Um, so that, we anticipate a revenue next year of 594,400. Working down the expenses, we have Town Hall Administration. The fee paid to Town Hall for doing all the billing through the revenue collector, Adrian. Um, we have the administrator, which is, but I get paid for doing all the extra work that we do for WPCA. We have a few lines that all remain the same, with supplies, postage, engineering, the legal, we bumped up, and at this time, I believe we're about $3,500 in the hole on that, just because we have a couple legal issues going on with the Town of Lebanon, and we have a legal issue that we're looking into for an insurance claim with the Town of Colchester. So them, that number's pretty high right now. The Colchester contract is what we pay for the flow of Town of Colchester. Right now, this year, we're paying $4.94 per thousand gallons. Um, these numbers, we project from the year before. We see, I took last year's flows and anticipate um, what they're gonna be for next year. I will say that this year, the first half of this year is running extremely heavy. So the later we can wait in the year before we go to public hearing with this budget, the better, because I can dial these numbers in a little bit better, because this amount may go up if we continue to get heavy flows. Um, anybody have any questions on the flows before I move on? Yeah, thank you. Training is just one event a year that I have to go to to keep up, so I know what the clean water money's doing with DEP. That's one meeting per year. Um, joint facilities, we dropped at $10,000. We're anticipating with the pump stations all um, getting, or at least half of them getting refurbished right now, that the service is gonna drop considerably. We're still under contract for the upcoming year as to um, how many hours they have to go out and check our stuff. But we've been, Ben was helping me work on that, and we're seeing where, how much overtime we can cut out of that, and that's why that dropped there. The same with equipment maintenance. We dropped that $10,000 for the same reason. For all this, the upgrades that we're doing now, we're anticipating that number to go down. Um, minor equipment, same thing. And we're hoping that all these upgrades we're doing are gonna continually drop the, the cost of what we're doing for repairs and such. Um, fire extinguishers here stayed the same. The telephone um, charge dropped dramatically, and the reason that is, um, the telephone charge is a charge to frontier for the alarm systems when they fail. Um, it sets off an alarm, and the crews have to go out and check on the pump stations, make sure they don't overflow, or bring um, generator power out to them if they need it. Um, the new pump stations all have what they call a mission system, which it uses the internet to send over all the warnings to East Hampton Joint Facilities. So we're, if these come online, we're gonna be disconnecting these frontier lines, and that should save us quite a bit. Ben, would you say they cost per year for these?
Oh, 560 a year.
Oh, 560 for each line to the mission system. So that's what we, we're anticipating, 7,000 next year. Um, electricity dropped a little bit, because I went over this with Sue over at Town Hall, and this is what we're anticipating for next year. So there's a little bit of a drop there. The fuel is what we have to fuel the generators up. We do that multiple times a year. It's at $1,500. Um, the insurance hasn't changed to 2,400. The contingency is for items that come up that we don't plan for, or if we run over on a particular line. That's why we carry 10,000. Whatever doesn't get used there goes into capital, and the capital is the, the allocation to the sinking fund, which is on the next line. Um, we tried to up that a little bit. This is for long-term capital improvements. And I'll get into more onto that in one second. Um, pump repairs is $20,000, and that, I looked at last year's budget, and that's holding right about where it should be. Um, we had a, the capital items, we had a major um, force main failure in Colchester on the airline track via duct. The intermunicipal agreement that was worked out back in the day when Hebron connected into Colchester, puts us responsible for whatever percentage of flow um, that we flow into Colchester, that percentage of those repairs we're responsible for. That repair came out to $459,056.15 for us. The repair itself was up, upward of a million and a half dollars. So this is what's over at our attorney's office right now. They're reviewing all the insurance. The insurance turned it down. We're fighting it and seeing if there's any way we can get them to cover it. If not, we want to at least try. It's a big check to write. Um, if we have to pay that, that's gonna have to come out of our fund balances, which right now, our fund five balance is 636,171. That's the last that we looked at it before we got, Elaine got the audited numbers, and the fund six balance is $98,571. So with that being said, with bills like this coming in, we have to plan for the future, so we have to keep trying to put some more money into this capital fund to plan, because after we pay this bill, if that's what comes up, we're not, we're only gonna have a couple hundred thousand dollars in there. And to give you an idea of what's coming up, there um, per the contract, um, we're, we're responsible for odor-controlled chemicals in Colchester, and they're um, planning on doing some work with that this year, and that's gonna be at a cost of $85,000, give or take. They're doing some valve replacements this year that have been neglected in the past for $185,000. So we're responsible for 35% give or take of that, so it'll be $94,000 to us. So that's just another $100,000 that we have to be thinking about. Like, these aren't numbers in stone, but these, what we're planning on right now, I went to the Colchester Sewer and Water Commission uh, meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I told them, I says, you gotta give us some notice on some of this stuff, so we can plan for it. But unfortunately, you know, a lot of this stuff, they're saying they're in need of, and they're doing it anyhow, so what I'm trying to get at here is that allocate, allocation to the sinking fund. We have to be paying attention to that and trying to get our fund balances up, so we can help offset some of these capital items. Um, the other thing we got going on is we're doing, uh, working on some inflow and infiltration studies, and that's where the water comes in through the pipes, through the manholes, and adds to the flow that we pay for. So I'm working with Ray Pierce right now, trying to get some more information on how we can um, do some more studies to see where we can try to patch up some of these leaks and find out where they are. Um, that's basically it, the WPCA cost. Um, I don't know if anybody else has any questions on this. Oh, and while I'm talking about it, um, the revenue from the expenses, there's a difference of $27,706. Um, we bill 1,094 EDUs each year. Um, right now, our EDU rate is 510 per year. We're, I am recommending a $30 increase to the EDU rate this year. That has not been voted on yet, that has not gone to public hearing yet. As I say, this is, historically, this is early for us, because we try to get as much information as we can before we go to public hearing, so we can be as accurate as possible.
Um, thank you. Just, just as a clarification, I believe these numbers are actually, they're not part of our budget. Is that correct?
That's, no, they're not. This is the WPCA's budget.
Correct, and that's a, a thing that's been set by the Nega Legislature, you know, so um, it, it, a different entity, a different pocket. This comes out of our back pocket or something, not, not necessarily our other pockets, so. Uh, but it's great to hear this, um, just to stay on, on top of, you know, some of the other expenses that the town incurs. Does anybody have any other questions?
I could jump in if you'd allow me to, Mr. Chair, then.
Sure, please.
I'd sent an email out earlier today. The chairman of WPCA couldn't be with us tonight. Uh, we invited her, but she had a previous engagement. So I told her that, you know, we wanted to show what this, uh, this isn't a final budget yet, but this is what Kevin's working on, so we sent this out today. We wanted the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectment to see that. I think this definitely warrants another meeting, but I'm not sure if we're gonna finish what everybody needs to know tonight, or if we have enough information for tonight. Not trying to not go through this. I just, we had quite a, a lot on the agenda already, but I'll leave that up to the people at the meeting. I just wanted to, she, Clara couldn't make it, so I just have a concern about the chairman of that not being here.
Correct, thank you. Uh, I, yes, Mel.
I, I would propose, I, I've been through this. Um, I've run some numbers against it. I've run some numbers against it. And I think any further discussion tonight is going to be just vague discussion because these numbers aren't final. I mean, I, I've got some questions, but I, I don't even think they're appropriate tonight. I would, I would agree with Andy. At a separate meeting, at a separate time, outside of the budget process, I think we could understand the whole process. I mean, I'm curious as to why if our flows go up, why doesn't Lebanon's flows go up? But again, for another night. But that's, that's my impression of.
You know, that's a good point. Lebanon, Lebanon is on, they, they work the same way we work with Colchester. Whatever their percentage of flows are, they're responsible for that percentage. So if we get a bill for 100,000 and they're 10% of the flow, they have to pay us 10,000.
I, I understand that, Kevin, but you have their, the revenue from them flat year to year.
I have that revenue because this has been in court now for two years.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
There's been a malfunction of the meter.
And until that, saying we, we probably shouldn't even. This is irrelevant to the budget, really.
Yeah.
Not a criticism at all, Kevin. I think, I mean, the fact that we now see a half a million dollars of residents' monies being spent is a good thing. I mean, we understand it now where we didn't understand it before. And it's obviously being properly, properly managed, but we don't understand the whole thing. So I think it really, yes, the numbers are important, but the process is important too. And I don't think that has any relevance to a budget discussion. And yes, I know I've changed since last week. So guilty, thank you, thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just do have a question, if you don't mind, for Elaine? Elaine, do these numbers, does the WPCA get included in our auditing, our audit at all? Who's reviewing?
With all of the other special revenue funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
That's it for me, Danny, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Thank you very, very much.
Good, thank you. Nice evening.
Anybody else have any other questions? Just a quick question. Are you able to use many of the fire department tires? Do their rims, Matt, meet up with your rims?
Yeah, a couple of the, I think the triaxle wears them. And the roll-off might be some of the big tires they have, I believe, come down here and we use them.
Perfect, okay.
Because they, they have a time restriction on their tires, I believe.
Correct, because of that FPA.
Yeah, if they're still good, we use them, so.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next.
Okay, thanks, Dan. So next on the agenda, to stick with the agenda, would be the miscellaneous general government requests. This is at the time, if you want anything that's in this budget book or people have questions, or there's special things that, as you reviewed your budget book, jumped out of you, or our miscellaneous general government requests, we can go down that.
Anybody have any thoughts, any concerns as they went through the books?
I can have Donna start. We could, we could go, if, I'm sorry, did somebody want to speak?
Yeah. We had a discussion before about the school resource officer and how that was paid and how it showed how it was paid. I think everybody kind of chimed in. So if you look at the budget, it says part-time patrol. And the school resource officer is not part-time patrol, but he gets paid out of that line. He should have his own line that says full-time school resource officer at Hebron Elementary School. And that will actually show what we intended it to show, that they're not paying for him, we are. So it really shouldn't be in that line.
Okay, I think, Elaine, is that something to do with the software? We just never change that, or can we change that?
We can segregate it, and I can create a new expense line for itself. It's just, that's where we put it when it was first being proposed a few years back, and it never got moved. But that cost is within that payroll line. We can segregate it out, you know, just be moving the pools of money.
Well, thanks, Andy, Elaine. I, I think that's a good idea that shows where the money's coming from and where it's going. It's certainly not going to patrol the streets. We're, we're, we're funding Hebron Elementary out of the town money, out of the town budget. So I'd like that at least to be shown. So thanks, guys, for correcting that.
No problem.
Yeah, and just to expand on that, Mark, Dan Larson here. These numbers become, I feel, important because it shows the actual true expense of what the town is spending on education. You know, it's not just what's in their budget books. You know, there's other, there's other monies, whether it's parks or rec monies, the highway department, resource officer, and I'm not sure what other monies or entities are used to support the schools.
AHM is in there. AHM is another piece that the town funds.
Okay.
That is the schools.
Yeah, like, Dan, you're right, like paving the parking lots. I mean, you know, I know we own everything, but we also contribute from the town budget to maintaining the school and its property.
The school is not responsible. Education doesn't, it's not responsible for capital. Capital spending on the facility. Their, their responsibility is the day-to-day maintenance, general maintenance.
Right. I, I, I get, I get that, Mal, but it, it, you know, it should be made clear that the town does contribute to maintaining the facility. I'm not sure everybody knows that. I didn't really even know that.
There's a big difference. The town owns the facility. Schools don't own the facility. And yes, you're right, we could break it out, but it's not going to change the cost of education. When it comes down to per pupil.
I think all that Mark is saying is that the general public doesn't understand the buckets of money. And if they see the general government budget going up because maybe it's to support the schools, the general public doesn't necessarily realize that.
But the paving isn't done out of the general government budget. The paving is generally done out of capital.
Yeah. I'm using the example of maybe.
I understand that.
A couple of years ago.
We gotta go through the chair. We gotta go through the chairman.
But there's a cost of maintaining the building, and the owner of the building bears that cost. Yes, you could certainly highlight that we spend X number of dollars on school buildings. But Donna, do we, do we transfer, or do we call those in-kind services for the, for things like AHM, for the school resource officer and things like that?
Chairman Larson, would you like me to answer that? Okay, I did pull out our in-kind services report, which we do report to the Board of Ed, and they report to the state. And in the last, last year's report, we had to the Hebron Board of Ed, 157,000 and some change that we reported as in-kind services, and that includes any of the police coverage, the SRO, and then the traffic police. Their benefits, some town staff time from the finance department that's dedicated to the Board of Education. And then some other in-kind, which is the parks and recreation, care of the fields and grounds, the town plowing and whatever maintenance the town might provide, tree work or other, you know, striping of the parking lots. We waive the fee for building permits and then other, some materials. So it's about 157,000. And then in next year, we'll be reporting, we'll be adding the AHM.
And those are the numbers that we should be, we should make the town aware of. I absolutely agree. Mr. Chairman?
Great, moving, yes.
Yeah, I, I still want to concur with you and Diane in saying that I don't think everybody knows that the Board of Education may be a separate entity, but I, I think a lot of people, and me included, thought that they funded their own improvements, funded taking care of the parking lot, funded putting up new playscapes. So I think that's important that Diane brought that up, you brought that up.
Well, hopefully that can get built into the report when the Board of Finance does its discussion at the public hearing, you know, to the, to the taxpayers when they present the budget.
If we're going to do that, then we need to report the maintenance on the other town buildings, just to keep it.
Whatever, they're just saying, yeah, but something to think about. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, Donna, do we have a miscellaneous list to review, or is this just an overview of the town's budget?
I'm pretty sure we finished that last week. We went through all the, all the departments last week, or finished that review last week.
Okay. Any other questions that came up since then? No?
It's not, okay.
If that question's going, the next on the agenda is the ARPA funds proposal, which I think Donna can put up on the screen. It's a draft at this time. So as you can see at the beginning, starts off with the CIP, $75,000 and over. Starts with a cert vehicle, possible cert vehicle. Shows that, okay, but you see that number, 115,000. The next item, which was a request in the CIP budget, so it does fit the venue. It's for a police vehicle. That's going to have a card reader on, I'm sorry, a plate reader on it. So that total, with everything going up, that number is 85,975. That would be outfitted with the computers, the cameras, everything that would make it up to snuff. So it's no secret, or maybe it is, it's not anymore, that the Company One Fire Station, even new ambulances they've built now, even if you were to try to get a van nosed ambulance, they've linked in the box, so it wouldn't fit. So the problem we have is we can't keep our secondary ambulance at Company One. So we're looking to expand that one bay. We had some plans drawn a year or so ago. But now that there's some ARPA funds, this could possibly be a reality if the boards think, or the town thinks that that's something we should fund, so that's at $100,000. I'm not sure if I explained that so everybody understands it. Right now, we have two ambulances, and we, we should be storing them at the same place per regulations. And because of the length of the new ambulance we got, they both don't fit in there. So we have one down at Company Two. So there's a delay in response time if the first ambulance is out on the call, and we get a second call. So we're looking to move some things around, but what would be appropriate, we don't see us moving out of that fire department anytime soon. So with some additional funding, possibly this could be a reality with an expansion of that one bay, the ambulance bay, which is, if you're staring at the building from the parking lot, it'd be the first bay all the way to the right. We would bring that out and would match the same line as, I guess, the command room or the radio room, Dan. I'm not sure what they call that.
Yes, that, exactly, the radio room.
So it wouldn't change really the architectural that much where it would look like the tail wagging the dog. It would be somewhat consistent with another line on that building. So that's what that is. Pendleton Drive Library Pedestrian Bridge at 101-886. That's for a bridge to take care of you from the library parking lot over to Pendleton Drive to AHM. That's built to a specification for safety handicap. Stoned us trail leading up to the bridge that's lighted. So that's why that cost is what it is. Skate park at Veterans at 145. As everybody heard tonight, we have a skateboard park that's been sitting there in disarray. So it's appropriate that we fix what we own that's broken before we start looking at new things. So that's one of the reasons when they came in that we combined the two, if they're talking about a pickleball court in the same area, which was their idea. I said it makes sense to do it once to be cheaper for the town if it gets approved, if the theory of pickleball gets approved. So that's why you saw those kind of lump together. It's going in the same area, or it's proposed to. Playscape at Veterans, that's old and needs repair. That's, that's served its purpose. So those playscapes are quite expensive. And like Mal brought up, I'm not sure if that includes all the handicap necessities they would need to get around the total structure itself. So that's something that they're going to look into. Hopefully they did, or that's in the price, but maybe not. Old Colchester Road Bridge Match, we have that in there as the 544,544,700. That, once again, because of this funding, we put that there. That doesn't mean it has to come out of this money, but we stuck it there for consideration. And then the Gilead Hill School Playscape at 108-630. Once again, that came from the school and their request. I'm not sure if that's an accurate number, but it's what they gave us, so we went with it. So that's a subtotal of $1,416,191. So next, this is where Mike brought this up, Mike McCormick.
Andy, can we stop at each section so we can discuss?
I'm sorry, absolutely, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I would like everybody to listen here, and especially the elected officials. I, I, I don't, I just don't think we could do all these, those things, and think of the redundancy here. So we're going to do a playscape for $150,000 at Veterans, which I sit in that parking lot, excited, ran for five years. Not many people use that. If we're going to get a playscape, let's not be redundant. I think it's more needed at Gilead Hill, where kids actually go out to recess and use it. And if you really want a brand-new playscape, what difference does it make if you drive to Gilead Hill instead of Best Park? So I, I would like you guys to consider that. I, I think, you know, trying to save the taxpayer money in using these rescue funds to maybe get some of the, the pump truck and rescue truck would be a better idea than redundantly building two playscapes. I am in favor of the, the skate park. I think the pickleball court is a necessary frill. That, that's just the way I feel about that. But especially the redundancy in two, two playscapes. I, I, I just, I can't see that, guys. I just, that's prudent to do. So I'm done.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might, I'm just going to make one comment to consider. I think two playscapes is also more about access and opportunity for all residents. So something to think about is that there are residents in town who don't have cars, where veterans is closer for them to walk to as opposed to just trying to walk to Gilead or drive to Gilead. So I think it's really important when we look at these, and we're obviously going to have to make some hard decisions. But let's consider access and opportunity of all residents in Hebron. Not everybody has a car or can easily access transportation if we build one. access transportation if we build one or the other, et cetera. So I can understand the frame of mind that went into proposing this. So I'd like us all to keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, Janet. You're on mute.
Hi. You know, I first heard about the money. I was like, Mark, I was like, oh, let's do all these things. You know, the fire trucks or police, whatever. But as I started thinking about it, and this money is to make the town and the people, citizens here make their lives just a little better. And we're always, there's never a time we're not going to have time, money for a fire truck or whatever. But this is, this is like money from heaven. And I just think that this is like something, you know, these, these small little things, even like this other stuff that was on the Parks and Rec list. These are small little things that add to the mental health of the citizens. And these little small things add up. You know, you want, you want a dog park, we'll add that to it. Yeah, for this is just an example, but today the Senate voted that daylight savings times won't change. It's a, it's, it's a stupid little thing. People with children, this is huge for their mental health. So you got to look at these small little pieces and see, okay, we, if we ever had a, you know, the capital improvements and we had a dog park versus a, you know, car, cop car is going to win every, every time. Dog park is never going to win. So my suggestion is to take some of this money and do things like the wish lists and you know, looking at the maintenance of the town. The maintenance of the town will take care of itself. It always has. Just, just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know Mike had his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the comments about the the playscape. And, you know, I, I've been a resident of town for nearly, boy, twenty eight years now and old enough to say that I assisted in the assembly of the playscape at Veterans when it first went in. But I, I do understand and echo Mark's comments because I did see something, I think it was on the Parks and Rec proposal, maybe it's not this year, but it's on the list to build a playscape at Burn Hill. And if that were to go through, we would then have four playscapes in town. And I drive by Veterans Park on a daily basis and I don't see that playscape getting a lot of use. I do drive by Hebron Elementary School quite a bit, especially on weekends, and I see that, that playscape getting used. So I do understand and echo Mark's comments that if we are restricted in terms of funds and where to allocate those funds, it may be better to use that money for the playscapes at the schools where they're probably more likely to be used than, than at Veterans Park, absent evidence that the playscape gets, gets a lot of use at Veterans Park.
Go ahead, Diane.
I, I thank everybody for their comments and I, I appreciate all of them. So from my perspective, yeah, I've lived in town. Oh my, it's going to be thirty years in June. And so I remember some of those playscapes going in. So a lot of these things on this list, so two, two things I'll point out. The very top line says total funding anticipated. I don't think we have this funding in hand. Yet. So while we anticipate it, it, it is truly a wishlist at this point. Is that correct? In that assumption?
Andy?
We've got the first payment in the bank. And then the second payment is anticipated this summer.
Okay, are they equal payments? So we have one point four?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. So a lot of, most everything on here I see as a safety concern for the public good in one way or another. Except for maybe the pedestrian bridge. And so the skate park, that would be great. You, you know, these things are deteriorating because, you know, they're old and they have a useful life. And so that's what's going on with the Veterans Park, the playscape there and the Gilead Hill playscape and the skate park. At some point, you know, these things become dangerous because they're so old. And, you know, we, we have these funds to replace them when, you know, potentially in future years, we'll be looking to say, okay, do we tear it down and not replace it? Like, I, I just don't think that that's something that we would even want to consider. Because we want families and kids to have these opportunities to be outside and play on playscape. So to me, it's really around, you know, the safety of our, our kids while they're outside and getting fresh air and a lot of these things like the cert vehicle, police vehicle, ambulance, construction bay, like, oh yeah, these are safety concerns and I'm in.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Mel.
I, I agree with everything that Janet, Tiffany and Diane talked about. I just have one question. And it, it's based on what Mark had, I thought Mark had said. I think, Mark, if I'm not, if I'm not incorrect, I think you had said something about rather than doing the the playscapes or something like that, we, we could buy the truck. That's my question and it's to Andy. I thought we couldn't buy the truck. It didn't fall under the, this.
Mr. Chairman, answer the question. Mel, you're correct. We reached out to the town's attorney and it was a stretch because it, it didn't fit one of the categories, but there's also a second thing that as you can see, that was originally requested in this year's C I P. We pushed that out. The rank and file, I talked to the chief. They need to put a committee together and come back with some more pertinent information on the new vehicle. Make sure the rank and file is on board and that's the direction that the fire department wants to go and it can be supported. And then secondly, that rescue truck is still in good shape. As you alluded to the plan before, we have these plans and it's not carved in stone. So then we look at the vehicles, see, does that really need to be replaced? Or can we do something else that's in, in more dire need like you guys are trying to do right now? So I'm talking with the chief, he agreed that we could take that off, put a committee together, come back with some more pertinent information on the type of truck that he's looking for, have a committee that could back it up with facts. Then secondly, give us an evaluation of that rescue truck because right now that rescue truck is in pristine condition. Exist.
That, that was my, my question there. I, by the way, Mark, I thoroughly agree that we need to buy that truck. But I think these funds will allow us to do things, and I don't mean to be repetitive here. But as Janet said, some of these things will never win in terms of capital funding. And this is like, and I hate to use the word, found money. But it's found money that has been specified in terms of types of projects that they, these things could be done in. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Dan.
Welcome. The other thing I'd like to add is I have seen, because I, you know, do repairs at Vets Park throughout the town. And I have actually seen a lot of young mothers, especially during the daytimes, bring their kids, they'll sit and the kids will play on the swings. They'll do this and that, you know, where they would be able to go to the schools during weekdays because school's in session. So they are used. So, and again, these are all things that under normal situations, we would probably not be able to, to swing. You know, so it, it, it kind of adds a little pizzazz to the town. You know, and, and as somebody was talking about the, the Pendleton Drive Bridge, I look at that as a safety concern. Because right now, in order to get from that side of that brook to the fire department side of the brook, from the library over, you have to walk along sixty six, along that little narrow sidewalk, if you would call that, over that bridge. This will give a far safer bar, a far better path to get over to A H M, to get over to that side of, of our, of our town. So I think that is kind of a safety concern right there. So. Moving on, please. Yes. Go ahead.
I think, I think you have to think also in terms of, we, we don't really listen to everybody. We listen to who comes with ideas and who comes and says they want this and they want that. I think if you polled the community, they would rather have a dog park than a pickleball court. And I, I, I can say with certainty that more people walk their dogs at Vets Park than play on the playscape. There's, there's people walking dogs over there all the time. There's people walking dogs at Ram and I have to tell them they can't walk their dogs there. So then inevitably they go over to Vets Park. So i- if we're talking about what serves a greater number of people, I, I think we're mistaken to think that those things would trump a dog park. And Peter, Peter Casper actually convinced me and had me thinking about that and talking to people. And well, I think Peter said sixty, I don't know, sixty percent of people own dogs in Hebron. I think that trumps the number of people that would play pickleball. So I, I don't know why we don't consider those things. I'm done.
I think, I think the dog park is being considered, but it's being considered in the next batch. Because Peter was going to get some information, yeah. So in fact, it's right there with the dog park in there. So I think it, it is being discussed. It's just that it's not, it's not shovel ready at this point by any means. If that makes any kind of sense. Is that, that kind of a correct statement?
Yes, there's a committee put together. They're going to research what it's going to in detail. They're going to back with a possible location that the field committee would be sufficient for that. We're going to have the A C O officer involved. We're going to talk to the town attorney about liability and what we need to do to police that. So there's a lot of things that this doesn't deter the request or anything like that. But before we can make a decision to move forward, the town being the board of selectment, Board of Finance for the cost of it, and the liability would have to make the decision whether they want to move that forward or not.
Okay, you want to move on to the capital projects, please?
Yes, okay. So next, the list would be capital projects from ten thousand up to the seventy four thousand nine ninety nine. Once again, this is a draft list. Everything started with nothing. So here we are. Martin Road Construction Engineering, you heard Kevin Kelly speak to that in his presentation because of the timing, we got to come up with that. But you got to remember, we got two point nine million dollars in a grant. So just pointing that out. Senior Center Generator. One of the things that you guys probably don't realize or see, but because we're doing the pump stations, we're going to have a couple of generators that are going to be given to the town. So there's one or two of them. We're looking to use one of them down at the senior center to finally get that generated. The only expense would be to set the pad and hook that up with a, a switch and wire it. So we're waiting to get a price on that. So that'll be added to this list once we get that.
I have that for you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. The Hammer Softball Field, they went out and raised some funds already. They gave a presentation to the board of selectment that in order to complete that project, they would need a possible another twenty thousand. That was the board of selectmen's wishes at that meeting to add the money to this list. So there it is. You heard the chief, the fire department marine, at twenty three thousand. The boat we got originally was from Columbia. It was used to try to save money for the taxpayers then. This type of money showed up. I said, this is something maybe we could add to this list. It's safety. We do have some bodies of water and we want to make sure we're prepared to do what we need to do in case of crisis. We also have numbers here for vandal proof surveillance cameras at Veterans at twelve thousand. That was brought up earlier. So we heard that call before. The cameras we have there are low and can be disabled or spray painted. They're not high quality and the recording monitor for that is inside that building just in a room. So that's aged out. It's kind of obsolete with the new technology that's out there. So we're looking to improve that. We heard that request. So we added that to the list. Virtual meeting room, conference equipment, library and town building. So when and if we ever come out of these, these virtual meetings or even a partial of a hybrid meeting, in-person meeting, we're not really set up to do that. So we're looking into getting some equipment. So if and when we can do that, or if we have to go back to doing that, we'll be able to do that. Right now, we don't have that equipment and we're looking to talk to some people regarding that. But we threw that, that number. It's to be determined. Trail repairs, that was something that was in the budget. I was trying to keep the regular budget down. So the trails are recreational. I threw the twelve thousand dollar request on this list to see where it goes. So that's a subtotal of ninety two thousand. So I'll stop at that list from ten thousand to seventy four nine 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 for questions.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Tiffany.
Um, just a quick question. If you'd let Andy answer, what exactly is, can you remind me what the funding for the trailer repairs is going to go toward? Because I forgot. Thank you.
That's, that's for stoned us, the material that they put down on it to make it smooth. That's what the request was for. They want to go through and grade the trails and they're starting to show some wear, some, you know, water damage and things like that. So that's just to buy the material. We'll put that down ourselves.
Yes, Janet.
Andy, um, the money for the Colchester Bridge, I mean, I know this is a great place to put it, but I, before we even knew we were getting this money, we were going to do the bridge. And I believe we were going to take the money out of, on a sign fund balance. Is there a thing that we'd rather have paid for through this money than, than the bridge? I mean, I'm, I'm opening that up to the whole group. You know, if you looked at the Parks and Rec drill things or anything else that has been talked about, that this would be a better spot to put it than say the, the bridge. It's just a thought. I mean.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that quickly. So there's two places we had talked about because we want, we need, we need to fix the bridge and we need, we need to do our funding to twenty percent. Originally, we're going to take it for the unders and fund balance at the time. We can't use the money, the reimbursement money for the state from the lead project because that hasn't been audited and we're not, we don't have that money yet. So we can't earmark something we don't have. But as I stated earlier, there's other areas where we were thinking of funding that money. I'm sorry, that bridge or other monies we were thinking to use. But because this list came out, we put it there. I, I, I don't disagree that. That's a big chunk of change on this list that could be funded in a different manner.
If, if we were to play the devil's advocate, if we were to, if we were to not pull that whole Colchester Road Bridge match funds from this, then it would have to come out of the, the direct pockets of the taxpayers of Hebron. That would be correct, correct?
No, it could be, it could be come out of the unders and fund balance with some of that monies is back taxes that we received after the, the budgeted year. You know, Elaine has the percentage, I think, pretty much of what we have in there. Not that I'm looking to spend that down, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, there was discussions of that's where that was going to come from. And then we were hoping or anticipating a reimbursement from the state regarding the lead project that we could possibly use that monies for an offset. So there was a couple of discussions prior to receiving word that we were going to get this type of ARPA. word that we're going to get this type of ARPA funds.
So a- as I said, what would be the downside of utilizing these ARPA funds for that?
You could do more other things or other items that come as a suggestion to add to the list and take that out of the contingency. But that that's a decision between the board of segment, Board of Finance. Or the town, whoever votes who approves this list. I think it's going to go to special town meeting.
Okay. Yes, Elaine.
Um, and if we take the money from the unassigned fund balance and our fund balance with the twenty twenty one fiscal year and audit is at nineteen point seven zero. So our fund balance is obviously very healthy and could accommodate that. But you would need, again, that's would need approval from the taxpayers where I believe the ARPA monies does not have to be, it just needs a town meeting, Donna, if that's correct, where we would probably need more approval with money from the fund balance for this.
I think either way, that would be going to a special town meeting because we we do intend to bring the ARPA projects to a special town meeting.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Dan?
Yes. Janet, did that clarify anything for you?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I was just putting it out there for something, you know, like I saw some things on that Parks and Rec list. Personally, I'd be like, that is amazing. I think, you know, if we could add more, you know, hiking trails and some of the open space that we had purchased and things like that, that that would be a really good investment in the town. Now, when you take in, you know, half a mil and put it towards the the bridge that you already could find money for somewhere else in the budget where it wouldn't increase the budget for the taxpayers. I mean, this is money that we basically have in saving. It's just a thought, you know, is that if that people are open to that.
Yeah, I just, I also in the back of my mind, remember even when we were getting the grant monies, there were people that still voted no. And I'm like, wait a minute, if we have to, we we're going to be obligated to repair a bridge. Why would you not take a grant? So I just, I just get nervous.
But not a lot of people. It wasn't like it was.
Definitely something to think about.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, hearing none, it looks like go ahead. Moving forward.
Then underneath that, we're just some things that came in along the way, like the A H M HVAC system upgrade, that would be, had to be worked out with the three towns for a split. And we didn't get a price on them yet. So I'm still waiting to hear back. We added the dog park as we heard that request from our selectment. And now there's a committee put together. Um, I'm not sure where that number came up from, but there's fifty thousand to the price tag for that. A couple of things that we noticed and and looking at the guidelines of helping out nonprofits. I mean, the old town hall building is in need of maintenance. The windows all need to be glazed. There's an issue with the cupola. The building needs to be painted again. It's right in the center of town. It's where we hold a lot of our functions. It's where we have our economic development going on with some new buildings. So I'm sure they could use some help with trying to maintain that building. So we didn't get a price on that yet, but that's something that would fit the venue of the ARPA funds. There's also communications equipment and radios for a long time requests from the Public Works Department. The low band radios are going to be obsolete at some point. Some other towns have done it. T N just recently did it and made this even more doable. They're going to go and switch over to the state police frequency and put a tower up. So that would make the pave the way for us to a lot easier to change over the frequency of the radios for the Public Works Department. And that would that would could put a system together where the town Highway Department, the Fire Department, the Parks and Recs Department, the Town Hall and all those entities could could have communications on one radio. So that's something some of the other towns have done. We're hoping to, when we did a bonding project, that we would add something like that. There was a huge cost to that. We need to revisit that now that T N is actually putting putting up the the state police tower and frequency, and they're going to be using it. We're a, we're a T N town. We will be able to tap into that. So we don't have a price, but that's something that was on a long range plan that had come up. Cert. It would definitely help them as well. Uh, and then we're working on this right now. Uh, there's some grants out there. We've been working with E S C for E V charging stations. There is some grant monies out there, but there's a cost to the town of about seven, seven thousand dollars to the municipality per per unit. But this would allow us to possibly put some in that commuter parking lot, maybe work with Ted's enhanced store. We have a town hall enhanced someone's down at the senior center. So we're working on that. So it is something else that we checked with and if it fits the venue. And I think there's more and more people buying hybrids and electric cars. And I think we need to be open minded and forward thinking and put some of these in some of the areas that are heavily populated during the day and then possibly at night where people can charge their vehicles. So that's the end of that list.
Uh, could I have a question on the E V power, uh, charging stations? Now, would that be something that they would have to utilize their credit card or whatever it to pay for the electricity? It would not be coming out of the town's coffers?
Yes, it would. It would be set up where there'd be a charge through the system.
Okay. And are we ever considering to put in? Right now, people can plug in, I believe, for free still at the town hall. Are we ever going to consider putting in the electronics so that if people wanted the electricity, they would have to pay for it?
That one's kind of obsolete. So we'd replace that so that one could, so that could happen. That's that's an older one already. Um, so it would make sense to replace it.
Yeah. Yes, Janet.
Um, I just wanted to get back to what I was saying before. I, one of the reasons I'm saying that is because there's so many T B Ds on this list. And when these things come back, we're going to have to make some hard decisions. And that's that's half a million dollars. And so some of this, you know, it might all work out and it will be what we we are going to get from the government. But it might not. And maybe you're going to be over by a half a mil. So this is just a suggestion because the other things have merit.
Okay.
So noted, so noted. And then last but not least, underneath this, there's just a couple of the Parks and Recs. Uh, as you heard earlier, they lost a lot of programming revenue. That's something that this would could offset. Uh, and then the A H M revenue loss as well. So those are just some things that were mentioned to me as the town manager and we I said I would add them to the list for consideration, but I didn't have numbers to go with them at this time.
Mister, Mister Chair?
Yes.
And I, Andy, I don't know if I even got to tell you this, Donna and I talked about this last week. If we do decide to use any of these dollars for revenue loss, that has to be disclosed by April first to the federal government.
Just those, just those two items, not the rest. We have till the end of the year for the rest of the stuff, right?
You have until December, December thirty first of twenty twenty four to submit your intentions unless it's for the revenue loss, then that has to be done by this April first.
Right. Thank you, Elaine.
Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I just want to follow up Andy with a question following Diane's previous comment. As I understand it, the projected or anticipated funding is two point four and right now we have one point two and you're expecting more funding in July. How does it work in terms of the likelihood we're going to receive the full one point two? Because one thing that's bouncing around in my head is uh, on this list, and I realize it's just a wish list right now. But we're already over, uh, you know, three hundred thousand dollars over what we have in the bank. And this budget will be approved and voted on by the residents in May. What happens if we don't get the anticipated funding or all of the anticipated funding? How how do we know that we, it's likely we're going to receive the additional one point two, an additional eight hundred thousand, whatever the amount is? How certain can we be?
No, it's a good question. I I I'm pretty certain that we're going to get it. We got the first half. They're committed to the second half. They said this is how it's going to come out. It's a funnel through from the feds down through the states to the municipalities. And then some of it's even county money that's going through the crocs. So everybody's working on it. I've talked to the people that are in charge of this. Uh, nobody's giving me any red lights or red flags. We got the the one point two. There's through the town managers association and C C M, nobody's indicated that there's any blips on the screen. So I'm I'm pretty confident we're going to get it. The other thing, as Elaine said, is I'm not in any rush or not me, the town shouldn't be in any rush to rush this list, as you heard, or two thousand, December twenty one, two thousand and twenty four. But what we're doing tonight is what's confusing, and I think you get it, is if we're not considering or approving some of this stuff on this list, even if it's not finalized, by the budget time, we didn't know what we're taking out of the capital improvement plan. So I can finalize that number that goes to ballot. And then the rest of the, the rest of the stuff, we still have time to work on. But I, there was a few of these items that were in the C I P, you know, that were moving around that probably wouldn't, as Mark stated, like, you know, they changed the formula C I P. So a lot of discussions you guys aren't aware of, I've already had with the department ads, including the Parks and Recs Commission. I I agree with Mark. I said, you can't have a playscape everywhere. So, you know, and listen to the people that deal with it. The one at Vets Park is old. A lot of, a lot of reasons people don't use it is it's outdated and it's old. It's not fun anymore. It's not clean. It's 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 old. So we own that. So we either got to fix it or take that out. Same with the skate park. We own that. It's broken. We're going to fix it or take it out. So that was a priority in that manner. They wanted to put the pickleball course in the same space. So I said, well, it'd be cheaper to do it once. He wanted to do one, one year, one the next. I said, let's see if it gets approved. We'll put it in these ARPA funds. They wanted to put the playscape up at Burnhill Park. I said, listen, you're, it's it's too much. I don't think it's going to fly. You're going to do one here. Looking to do one at the school. The one at the school was different age restricted for different kids. They have one there now that the little kids can't use. They're looking for the preschoolers and the younger kids to put this one in. That's determined by the school what the needs are up there. So we put that into the the mix as well. So you got a couple of different issues here. You got to, this is an unapproved list. It's not my list. It's just some of the items that came into the town manager's office, some of the items that were on C I P that probably weren't going to get funded. So we stuck them here for other people to weigh in on. So I'm I'm not sure if I answered your question or not, but I'm pretty sure we're going to get that other money. Elaine, have you heard anything through your finance directors? Page?
I've heard through G F O A that everyone's pretty certain that we'll still be receiving the other one point four. We have one point four in the bank. And it it was pretty much a a commitment at the time that these funds were even given in June of twenty twenty one, that we would receive the other half in June of twenty twenty two. And I have not heard anything through G F O A about the municipalities not receiving these dollars.
And Elaine, just to follow up to that, I think we may have discussed that at one of our finance meetings, but does it matter that we received some of the funding in one budget year? And may not receive the balance of the funding in another, until another budget year?
It just matters with how it will only to be reflected in the audit report. This is I've already had lengthy conversations with our auditing firm because there is extreme scrutiny that will be done with these dollars and in the reporting of them. So yes, that will be a extra burden for my office for sure and for the auditing firm. They're still, even though they keep saying they've submitted the final rule as to the reporting of it, they're still changing some of that criteria. My auditing firm is doing, or our auditing firm is doing a webinar next month on everything they've learned. And I will be participating in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that's all I had on that, on that list. It's on the agenda. Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions, comments? So at what point do or does this list need to be finalized? Is it something that needs to be finalized pre-budget? Or is it something that needs to be finalized before a town meeting when the the approved items go to the the public?
Well, it's a double edged sword. What I would see, my response to you would be, we got to get our budget done first. So the C I P budget would need to be completed and approved and sent over to the Board of Finance along with the budget and see where that goes. But I would, I would hope you could have some sort of consensus between the board of segment, Board of Finance, what projects we should leave on that list that aren't in the C I P or which ones we should put back in the C I P. I think that's the first decision you have to make. And then hope by leaving them on the list that it gets approved by the town. And if they don't, you add them back into the C I P in the following year. But this budget is is first and foremost that we finalize this in the timeframes that charter allows. And we had still have time to do a special meeting, which I think where I was targeting, depending on how this went, is sometime in May as well to have the special meeting regarding the ARPA funds to the list that the town would approve. But that's open, it's also open to the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen to decide.
Okay. Mel?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Does this have to be decided prior to July first, Andy?
I was under the impression that these funds are available till the end of twenty four and or the end of twenty fourth fiscal year and.
I'm just going to go back to Elaine's statement. She had her check as recently as last week when I was away. And her statement, as far as I know, is correct. If we were going to use it to do the offsetting revenues for loss of, loss of revenues, like in the the Parks Department, that'll have to be done and approved. It doesn't have to be totally approved. That the town approves certain portions of that. Like Donna stated, the April first, that portion would have to be done. But I'm believing Elaine said, do the monies have to be spent, Elaine, or is the list be approved?
The list have to be approved.
The money doesn't have to be expended by April first, but if you're going to use it for offsetting revenue loss, that list needs to be remitted by April first to the state. You don't have to have already expended it, but you have to send your intentions to use it for loss of revenue.
Yeah. Now, how about the list, the approved list? When does that have to be approved by?
It has to be remitted by December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
That's what I thought.
So your bigger problem is just determining what you're going to need for C I P for this proposed fiscal year budget. Otherwise, this list you could take more time with. I mean, if if you were to move forward with the C I P projects as they've been outlined as true C I P projects, you can move forward in that manner and then still take your time with this ARPA listing. That doesn't have to be submitted till December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Elaine.
It's just whether you would want to utilize any of these dollars to start some of the projects over the course of the summer time. But again, these funds are in. But again, these funds are in their own fund, separate fund, and in their own bank account, which was mandated by the federal government as well. So we just have to be really, really cautious about not commingling any dollars.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I, yes, go ahead, please.
Do you, we've talked about looking at the CIP and approving the CIP list, but we haven't looked at, I'm sorry, we haven't looked at it tonight. I know we, it's late already, but.
It's on the agenda, is it on the next meeting, Donna?
Next meeting, it talks about board of selectmen public hearing, revenues overview and discussion, budget deliberations, and then finalizing the selectmen's budget.
Finalizing the selectmen's budget would include the, also it's finalizing the CIP budget.
And the fire plan as well, right?
Yeah, well, yes, we do need to approve that.
Right. Does that answer your question?
Diane, does that?
Yes, it does, sorry, I was on mute. Thank you.
So we do all have copies of what the proposed CIP items are, correct?
You do, and I could, yes.
Page 23.
Okay, so what I would suggest is, everybody take a look at that this next week, because we have one more meeting to do any kinds of swapping, changing, or whatever. Because we're down to the wire where we're going to need to vote on moving something forward, us, the board of selectmen, moving it forward to the board of finance, and then the board of finance will do their thing. So we're kind of sort of at that point, I feel, that we need to review, you know, the documentation that we've got, review the, the budget as a whole, see if we are happy with it, if we, that's, before moving it forward to the board of finance, and reviewing the CIP portion of it, and again, the same type of thing, any changes, additions, deletions, so that we can discuss that next, next Tuesday night and move this thing forward. That a fair, fair representation of our mission?
Yeah, you know, you know as well as anybody else, the CIP are the big ticket items, we're going to be looking at, you know, revenues, you're going to be looking at the mill rate, what that's going to do to the taxpayer, and that's when you want to make some adjustments and understand adjustments you make, if any, what it's going to do to the budget, that's the, the big ticket items. But, so we weren't not trying to go through that tonight, it just, that's normal process we've been doing, so we can hopefully get it done next Tuesday.
So that's kind of sort of our homework, I think, everybody kind of review things, review what you've heard. You know? Move this thing along. Okay, yes.
I just wanted to let you guys know, I will not be at next week's meeting, I'm going to review everything, if I have questions, I will let Diane know and.
Perfect, okay.
I will not be present either, hopefully that's not a problem for the board of finance quorum.
Three, it's majority, I believe. It's three.
The board of finance doesn't have to take any action next week, so you should be fine.
Right.
And you could send in your comments, you could send them into the town manager, and we'll distribute them, we'll distribute them to both boards.
Okay, Diane, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, thank you for putting this list up for us as a reminder, and I know we went, we've gone through it, and we also looked at the ARPA funds, I think, before, but thank you for putting it up on the screen, and just sort of going through the process of when we would approve this, and I just was mentioning it because you and I, I think Andy was mentioning, that's what's most important, to get it approved for the budget process, so that's the only reason. Thank you.
Okay, great. Tiffany, did you have your hand up? No, okay, Gail? You're on mute.
I am okay, I have no questions at this time.
Okay, great. Okay. Hearing none? I believe we would, yes.
Is it time for, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Terry McManus, and I was wondering, is it time for public comment?
That's what I was going to do, our next section would be public comments, sir.
Excellent, may I speak?
If everyone else is done, we'll open up public comment, again, try to limit to three minutes or less, and I think you already stated your name, so.
Terry McManus, yes, up on North Street. I was the one member that voted against that grant in that meeting the other night, and I don't really want to go into the pros and cons of it, but it wasn't because I didn't want to accept the grant. I wanted to get, just make a comment on, when I first started attending these meetings, I saw the ARPA funds that would take care of the projected 20%, $522,000 for that bridge, and as a taxpayer, I felt extremely relieved, because main reason is, is that's the minimum figure we're going to be spending or obligated on that bridge, that figure can go up. Now, just some feedback as a taxpayer about finding those monies someplace else, and is it okay to do that as long as we don't raise this year's taxes? And we have this piggy bank over here. I just want to remind the members of the board that if we have savings, those are taxes that citizens like yourselves and myself paid last year, or the year before, or the year before that, and if there's been one thing that has been constant in our community, and this is a good thing, and I'm complaining about it, but taxes have been going up forever. If we have the opportunity to take care of a major infrastructure repair, such as this bridge, through the ARPA fund, I would be much rather do that than either increase taxes or take taxes out of savings. If we're talking about a wish list, and it's all really good, but there's other things that I'm wondering about, what we have projections, there was talk about taking care of all the citizens within HEBEN. Well, we have some citizens that have SIR, most citizens do not. We have some citizens that have a gas pipeline, I don't know what the proportion is, but we have a lot of citizens that do not have a gas pipeline. When are we going to be getting 5G? Things that those are major costs in front of us that I really don't hear being discussed at all. And so, again, Dan, it's great we got that, that grant, the reason I voted no is not because I didn't want the grant, I appreciate you letting me talk here.
No problem, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's a few comments that were written in earlier under the public comment, we need to read them into the record. The first one was from Ron Massey, and he just said, please fund pickleball courts. The next one was from Cheryl Yu from Bolton. I hope you will support the funding for the pickleball courts, I drive from Bolton two times a week to play pickleball indoors in, at Gilead Hill School. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport ever, according to studies, pickleball can be played by everyone, there are rules that assist wheelchair players, thanks. And then Chief Starkell just thanked everyone for your time, and said, please don't hesitate to stop in to see him if you have any questions or would like a tour. And that is it for public comment.
Okay, great. Hearing that, Hale?
Is it time to adjourn? It is exactly 10 o'clock. I moved that we adjourn.
Thank you.
And I moved that we adjourned the board of finance as well.
Move to adjourn, Diane.
Thank you all, thank you all for your time.